Okay, Mayor, it's all yours. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, John. Oh, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the River Falls City Council meeting of August 25th. The first thing we'll do is say this pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thanks. Next, we'll go on to roll call, Christie.
Mr. Bierstedt.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morissette. Odine. Plunkett.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Christie. Next, we'll move on to approval of the minutes from the August 11th meeting.
Approval.
Second.
Okay, first and second. Yep, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I do have, I sent the clerk an email, and I know that that it probably got changed, but I just want to make sure. I didn't see an update on the vote for the, trying to find it now, I should have had it in front of me, I apologize. On the vote for the ETZ waiver.
Yep.
The, 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 the way the role, here it is, "With no further comment, the mayor asked for a vote on the resolution. The roll call vote passed 4-3 with all voting in against except Downing, Morissette, and Plunkett." I, I think if I could ask the clerk, did, did you clean that up in, in a more formal way? I just never saw a, a follow-up email to that.
Um, yes, I think I sent you a follow-up. I did clean it up and reposted, so I'll just double-check that, though.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for letting me know.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, anybody, anybody else with the minutes? Okay, Christie, we have first and second on the minutes. Can you please call?
Mr. Plunkett. Thank you. Odine. Ms. Odine. Watson.
Aye.
Gagne.
Aye.
Morissette.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Bierstedt.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Okay, next, we have approval of the bills with Mr. Gagne.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of the bills in the amount of $1,619,966.26, subject to the comptroller.
Second.
Okay, we've got a first and a second on the bills. Anybody have anything on the bills? Otherwise, Christie, we have first and a second on the bills.
Ms. Odine. Thank you. Downing.
Aye.
Morissette.
Aye.
Gagne.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Bierstedt.
Aye.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, move on. This is where we have public comments. I would, I, I'm, I'm going to tell everybody that who wants to make public comments about DeSantis, if they could please hang on, the next thing we do after public comments will be a public hearing on amending the comprehensive plan of future land use map. So if they want to talk, then would be the time. Right now, for public comments will be for anybody that has anything other than DeSantis Park stuff. So, and I'm not sure, Jason, what we have at City Hall in the council chambers? If anybody has anything other than DeSantis Park stuff?
Mr. Mayor, I have to apologize. We had to step out to attend to a matter. Could, could you please repeat what you just announced or what you just called?
I was saying, um, for public comments, well, anybody that has anything about DeSantis Park, we'll have them hold on to their comments till the next item, which is a public hearing on the future land use map and the comprehensive plan, and everybody can give their comments on DeSantis Park then. This comment section will be for anybody if they have anything other than DeSantis Park.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to turn the podium over. We do have one gentleman here to speak in public comment.
Thank you.
Benjamin Fox, 2529 Powell Avenue. Um, I would like to thank the council and the mayor for having a special meeting last week. It cleared up very, it was in regards to public comment and such. Um, there's a couple items in there. Um, the minutes availability, as Councilman Morissette just indicated, there are some times where there are small typos because I was confused very also with the in against and how the vote was read. It is very hard on YouTube to hear which council members may have voted, so I don't know if, you know, the clerk would like to repeat, you know, Morissette, aye, after he voted or such, because it's very hard to hear sometimes and try to keep, you know, the set moving along. And then, uh, there was some comments about the agendas. You set the agenda 10 days before the meeting. You put out the packet, uh, three days before the meeting with very expansive notes. Um, so that leads to the point of like having proper research with staff. You know, so that if council members would like to, they should have two people because if a council member brings something to the agenda and the mayor is against it, the mayor may vote veto it, and so thus it wastes staff time and energy. Maybe, you know, I don't think the councils have like suggestions broadly on the agenda. Maybe that grew up during the administrative report, so that they could properly research anything. Um, and then there was mention of public reading of emails, comments, everything else. That does weigh down a video a lot, trying to read the email. They may have links or lengthy or pictures. So there missed, there should be a good way to either do petitions or email readings outside of during the meeting. So with that, I thank you.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Oh, sorry. Anything else, Jason? Anybody else?
He has gone into the hall to ask.
Oh, okay. Thanks, John.
Mr. Mayor, I think we are at capacity at the chambers and at the train, the training room over, Phil. So they're just making sure that anybody in either of the two rooms or gets a chance if they wanted to speak.
Three rooms, actually. Okay, you can go ahead with the next item.
Okay.
Here's then.
Thanks, John.
Yep.
Okay, so before we have the public hearing on the ordinance, uh, 2020-07, amending the comprehensive plan and the future land use map, Amy Peterson will give us a presentation on all of this stuff coming up.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. Give me just a minute here to get the presentation set. Okay. Okay, grabbed the wrong screen. So now, does that look good?
Looks good.
Okay, and you can hear me, I assume?
Yeah, we see your speaker notes.
We do?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
I think you got to open it up on the other screen.
Try it again.
You can change your display settings too, Amy. If you just open that same view back up and then go to display settings, you can switch out of presenter view, but then you won't have it unless you've got multiple screens.
Let's try it one more time. Tried it beforehand, but it's not working now. Let's see if I can do this. Okay, how's that?
Excellent.
Looks good? Okay, so, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Amy Peterson. I'm your Community Development Director, and I'll be presenting information to you this evening on the Milltown Residences project. Uh, this presentation is for items 2 through 6 on your agenda this evening. So staff has provided you an excellent report tonight, and there's more history and background on this project provided in the August 4th Plan Commission Report. Because these reports are so comprehensive, I'm not going to dig deep into the details of the items on your agenda, but rather will focus on housing need and density. And just for ease of flow, it would be best to hold questions or comments until the end when the mayor can coordinate those. Goals for the presentation include an overview of the Milltown residences, housing needs and benefits, density in cities, and then we'll circle back to the process and benefits of the proposed project as well as recommended actions before you this evening. So here's the site plan for the proposed project that includes four buildings in two phases, which provide 84 1, 2, and 3-bedroom townhome-style units. If you recall, the city released an RFP and received six proposals with a variety of densities and housing types. 360 Real Estate Solutions LLC proposed to build, own, and operate this development, the selected two forward. The development site will be accessed via a new public road set into DeSantis Park. You can see that here. Parking and a turnaround will be constructed to serve the park for the general public. It will also provide access to Glover Road. The site has been designed with the realignment of dry-run road, which will eliminate traffic issues created by the misaligned intersection. And 2.2 acres to the west of the realigned road will be retained at the city for future development. The 1 and 3-bedroom units will be all one level. 2-bedroom units are two levels. Attached garages and surface parking are provided on the north side of the buildings. The units feature walk-up porches facing West Division Street, and the garages are designed with rooftop patios facing DeSantis Park to create outdoor spaces for the residents. High-quality building materials, energy-efficient design, natural landscaping, and a layout that blends and connects to DeSantis Park are advantages to this design. The next few slides show the view from the neighborhood along Division Street. Seen here is a cross-section, showing that the development, because of the grade and setback, will only be slightly higher than the two-story buildings on the south side of Division Street. While this is a change for the neighborhood, one advantage may be slowing of traffic as this space will take on more of a developed feel, which typically has the tendency to slow drivers. Here's another view from Bobwhite Street. And a view from the east on Division Street. You'll notice here that the, the designer did not include the trees and landscaping that is planned for the south side of the buildings, which will soften the view over time. So let's shift gears and take a few minutes to talk about our housing need. As a member of the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, the city receives this monthly publication, and this one in particular is from April 2020 and is titled "More Housing." In it, there are articles on how local governments can address Wisconsin's housing shortage by removing barriers to workforce housing and taking on policy decisions to increase housing. I'll provide just a few slides from these articles. Kirk Paulson, Professor of Urban Planning at the University of Wisconsin-Madison, shows in this graph that housing construction and subdivision activity in Wisconsin have not recovered from the Great Recession and remain at historically low levels. He addresses this in detail in his article "Local Governments Can Address Wisconsin's Workforce Housing Shortage." The blue line represents lots created, the orange, single-family permits, and the green, multifamily permits from across the state. And the years along the X-axis span from 1994 to 2018. The single-family permits peaked about 2004, to give you a reference. Here is essentially the same graph for the city of River Falls. The years shown here span 2000 to 2019, and you can see that we had our low point for single-family in 2011. And we haven't come back to the record-high years that we had in 2002 and 2004. You can also see that the city was not affected as harshly as other areas of the state as our single-family permits do not peak and valley as dramatically as on the last slide. Multifamily in the city has been a much different story. There is a small blip in 2002 and another in 2019, which includes the Depot, Birchcrest, and Aberdeen developments. Other than that, we have not been bringing on high numbers of multifamily housing units over the last 20 years. This is a similar graph from the city's housing need study, and instead of tracking permits, it tracks number of units permitted. This shows a more detailed multifamily permit story, showing about 150 units permitted here in 2002 and approximately 300 units permitted over the next 14 years. I want to provide a sidebar here on workforce housing. This term gets tossed around a lot, so here's the definition from the city's comprehensive plan. It is "Housing available to and with financial reaches of the city of River Falls entry-level and moderate-income wage earners." Essentially, it means affordable housing for all. Back to the municipality articles, Tom Larson, Senior Vice President of Legal and Public Affairs for the Wisconsin Realtors Association, provided this article "Removing Local Barriers to Workforce Housing." In it, he emphasized that Wisconsin has not built enough homes to keep up with population and income growth. In addition, construction costs are rising faster than inflation in incomes, and outdated land use regulations drive up the cost of housing. He then discusses ways municipalities can increase the supply of workforce housing by streamlining permitting processes to reduce time and cost to developers. Land costs are a big contributor to overall housing costs, and thus increasing density and allowing smaller lot sizes help reduce this cost. The city of Minneapolis recently removed single-family zoning to encourage integration of housing types and higher-density units. Also on his list was reducing development-related fees, specifically impact fees can reduce the housing cost bottom line. This is a whole other topic to be debated. To the next bullet, he stated that "One of the biggest barriers to new home building in communities is the opposition from existing residents. By opposing the development of new housing, "Yimby's," or "Not in My Backyard," limit the supply of housing necessary to meet demand, causing prices to increase further." And lastly, Mr. Larson contends that most municipalities identify the housing shortage as a major concern, but very few actively work to attract it. This map from 2017, also from that article, shows that both Pierce and St. Croix counties fall into the barely affordable category, meaning that a median-income household can barely afford the median-priced home. Staff continues to discuss this table from the city's housing needs analysis that shows River Falls is short on most housing types, whether for sale or rent, and we know that the market continues to be tight yet today. The study identifies target units required in future years, and staff is tracking incoming developments against these targets. The four housing market segments identified in the study include single-family for sale, multifamily for sale, multifamily for rent, and senior housing. These segments are then broken down further into subcategories based primarily on price point. The table shows the estimated study targets and units that have been built in recent years. Milltown residences, while technically market rate, will fall into the shallow subsidy multifamily category here. Based on the developers' target rental rates, these 84 units will add to the 20 units brought on in 2020 for a total of 104 units in this category that is projected to meet a minimum of 205 units by 2030. One more sidebar here on market rate versus housing subsidy. Market rate rental housing is housing that does not need, that does not have any income restrictions. Subsidy typically means that there is rental assistance provided. The city's housing study categorized unit demand by types. Milltown residences will not have income restrictions and will not be subsidized, and therefore is a market rate product. However, their projected rents fall into the 50% to 80% category in our housing study, which is the shallow subsidy category. This is a key issue for housing development in the city. Because the city has not brought on much multifamily housing in recent years, there are no comparables for lending institutions to use when financing new projects. While the cost to build these units is high, our market rents haven't kept pace. This was supported by the city's housing study, and I will quote from it here. "It may be difficult to construct new multifamily product with amenities today's renters desire, given market rents and development costs. Construction costs will likely average about $143 per square foot to develop based on an exceptional quality product with 10 or more units. Development costs on this scale will likely require rents per square foot significantly higher than the existing product in River Falls. Based on these costs, it will be difficult to develop standalone multifamily housing structures by the private sector based on current market rents." Let's switch gears and dig into density just a bit. This New York Times article from this year states, "To address the country's monumental housing crisis and also become less automobile and carbon-dependent, America needs to densify its job-rich metro areas so that more people can afford to live there and walk, bike, and take public transit to get to work and back." According to a much cited report by the McKinsey Global Institute, California is 3.5 million houses short. Housing shortages exacerbate home prices and homelessness and cause all sorts of other ripple effects on commute times, economic productivity, health, and family life. While River Falls is not California, the point that cities are made to be dense still holds. They provide the infrastructure, beautiful public spaces, low car use, and greater walkability by providing many amenities in close proximity to each other. Low density is more costly to provide municipal services. With less homes and businesses per mile, there is less revenue coming in to, to pay for those services. Ultimately, higher density saves land and energy and is ultimately more sustainable. This publication produced by the Local Government Commission in cooperation with the US EPA and the National Association of Realtors back in 2003 lists many of the benefits to density. It helps create walkable neighborhoods, supports housing choice and affordability, helps expand transportation choices, supports community fiscal health, improves security, and helps protect the environment. Here are the gross densities of recent developments in the city, and the average of those, must be five on the bottom, um, the average is 19.1 units per acre, which is just over the 18 units per acre proposed for the Milltown residences. As we talk about density, it's important to also talk about parkland and open space. This development is proposed next to a 25-acre community park, and it's important to note that the amount of parkland and open space in River Falls outcompetes most communities. The National Recreation and Parks Association recommends just over 17 acres of active parkland for every 1,000 residents. In 2018, River Falls was at 18 acres for every 1,000 residents. And note, this is active parkland calculation, so those are areas such as Glen Park, Hoffman Park, and our neighborhood parks. It does not include the large amounts of conservancy acreage in the city. For comparison, Minneapolis, which is touted as a recreational-rich community, is at 12.4 acres per thousand. The 1995 Park and Rec Plan defines existing park and recreational spaces into categories. The community park category is defined to provide more space and more elaborate facilities than neighborhood parks. In this plan, DeSantis Park is listed as yet to be acquired, but is categorized as a community park. Staff contends that up to this point, DeSantis Park has been underdeveloped and therefore utilized primarily as a neighborhood park. The development of this park, including water and sewer connection to Glover School and a parking lot, has been lagging on for almost 20 years. Where will the nearly $1 million to pay for the necessary infrastructure come from if not a development of this scale? Before we jump into detail on the Milltown project, I want to mention Planned Unit Developments, or PUDs. This is the mechanism that allows for flexibility in return for enhanced design or other such a benefit that may assist both the developer and the community. PUDs are used frequently in the city. As you can see on this map, wherever you see the thick black lines in PUD, it has been used. For example, University Falls on East Cascade, the Eco Village on Apollo Road, 1300 South Main Street, currently under construction, was approved using a PUD. So this project using a PUD for increased density and flexibility is not a new concept in the city. So now on to Milltown. You'll recall the RFP laid out these primarily, primary site goals and identified these challenges. To achieve the goals, staff recognized that higher-density development, greater than single-family, would be needed to overcome the site challenges, justify the infrastructure costs that are necessary to serve the site, and provide the funding mechanism to pay for the public infrastructure to serve the park. The Milltown, the Milltown Residences project provides numerous benefits to the city of River Falls. Public infrastructure improvements to ink DeSantis Park, meeting the city's housing needs in a higher-density, more sustainable development, providing a secondary emergency access to the development to the east, and the city retains the new lots to the west for future development. Just a reminder of the process for this project so far. Plan Commission did not meet in June due to the pandemic. Thus, staff requested comments from Plan Commission members as they prepared the staff report for council. Those comments were provided in the council report. A public hearing was held at the city council on June 9th, and council approved the general development plan, thereby establishing the basic right for use of the area as presented. This right is conditional upon conformity of the specific implementation plan. Plan Commission approved the future land use for the area, as well as provided a positive recommendation on tax increment District 16. Staff supports that the specific implementation plan substantially conforms to the GDP. However, Plan Commission's vote tied on the specific implementation plan for the proposed project. So before you tonight is the recognition to improve, to approve, ordinance 2020-07, which updates the future land use for both Man Valley and the future land use for both Man Valley and the city-owned De Sanctus site. It also removes the 12-unit limit on the high-density category in the future land use plan. The resolution approving the planned unit development, specific implementation plan for Milltown residences, which approves the proposed project. The resolution approving a development agreement between the city of River Falls and One RF LLC, which please note is 360 Real Estate LLC for this project. And the resolution creating tax increment district number 16, approving the project plan and establishing its boundaries. With that, I will turn it back to you, Mayor.
We'll keep the comments to two minutes. Oops, sorry. Was I muted? Oh, sorry. So what we'll do now is we'll close the council hearing and we'll open up a public hearing on the ordinance 2020-07, amending the comprehensive plan and future land use map. This is the second reading in this position, and what we'll do is we'll have the public make their comments. Diane's going to be our timekeeper. Everybody has two minutes, and if the comments are getting repetitive and it's just the same thing over and over, we will stop the comments. So Jason, John, should we, let's start with anybody that may be on the phone.
Yes, I have a few people here first, so I will bring them in one at a time. This is Patrick Bilbury. Bringing him in. All right, all right. Patrick Bilbury isn't on.
John Smith, I think we're getting quite a bit of echo coming from Chambers, possibly.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, does that sound okay to everybody? I guess it is a little echo.
It is a little echo, yeah.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
It might just be the phone system.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, yeah, my name is Patrick Bilbury, and I'd like to point out that the new development presents a concern to me as far as obstructing the view of being a beautiful park and also the old historic townory town hall, and plus the fact that it's two stories. I wasn't expecting to be two stories. I was expecting it to be smaller. That's one of my concerns. The other is, I'm an avid bicycle rider on that part of the street there, and every year we have this event called the annual autumn truck, which I participate in. And as a matter of fact, I'm wearing my autumn truck, one of my autumn truck t-shirts right now from 2018, and I've been in this event for a long time, and my t-shirts fill up about one-fourth of my closet already. But anyway, what I'm concerned about is the increased congestion, because I know there's a lot of bicycle riders, a lot of pedestrians, a lot of joggers along that particular route where the planned development is. So I'm concerned that this massive development project is going to present some additional hazards for those who'd like to jog, bike, or walk along County M in that part of the area. Thank you.
Mr. Bilbury.
I brought in Tiffany Bysinski. Tiffany, are you there? Give her a second.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Tiffany Bysinski. That was a good attempt, but didn't quite get there. I live at 215 Hamilton Drive, and before this meeting, I sent all of council the updated copies of the online petition, so I'm sure you guys have seen that at least a few times by now. I have to say, I believe this and any high-density development on this land is a huge mistake. We are not an urban city, and you cannot compare River Falls to Minneapolis or cities in California. Our parkland and open space makes our community unique and desirable. Also, I'm severely disappointed in the manner in which this project's GDP was approved during a global pandemic. The lack of community involvement in this project is quite concerning, considering this project directly affects the community park, especially during the pandemic. I urge you to please slow down before moving forward with this project. Our residents are under quite a bit of stress as it is navigating our way through the pandemic. I do not feel that we should be pushing projects through while we are all distracted and trying to get on with our new normal. All developments should receive proper community input, and I do not feel that this project has gained that before it got pushed through. And it's pretty clear through a number of social media forums and other comments that have been made throughout the community that this project does not have the community's support. Parks, and De Sanctus Park in particular, are here for all people to enjoy. Putting a development of this magnitude right in front of the park not only blocks the park view but now deters many people from using it or even knowing it exists. And those pictures of the parks that were in the presentation show that the park's pretty much completely blocked as you drive down Division. All of extra hustle and bustle, the additional 200-plus people and their vehicles will contradict the park's original purpose of being a quiet, passive park where people can experience and learn about nature.
Okay, Ms. Bysinski, can you finish up now?
Yeah, I've got just a few comments left.
Okay, everybody's got two minutes. Thank you. We got a lot of people who want to talk. Thank you.
I understand that this land was purchased by the city with the intent to development, but why does this have to be the only option? Many residents of River Falls would like to see this annex into the park to create more amenities. We could create a nature garden, which was originally part of the park's plan and never actually created. We could add a dog park, community gardens, and so much more amenities that Glen and Hoffman Parks do not offer.
Okay.
If you're looking at having to absolutely develop this... Am I cut off?
Yep. Is that everything? So we can move on to everybody else?
I have one more thing here. One more thing, please. If you absolutely feel like this needs to be developed, I urge you to go back to Gerard Corporation and go with a smaller, a lower-density unit. They have that 44-unit condos there, twin homes, I think it was. That would better suit the land.
Okay, thank you.
And our needs for the city.
Who's next? Who's next, John? Thank you, Ms. Bysinski. Who's next, John?
Bringing Trevor Stokes in, who is now unmuted. Trevor?
Good evening. I'm standing up today to voice my opposition for the housing plan along De Sanctus Park. I would like clarification on why you feel it is necessary to create such an expansive complex after going on what seems to be a building spree across the city. I've heard countless times that housing to this extent is much needed. I'd like to know what constitutes necessity aside from citing growth wants. I caution you to follow the path of aggressive expansion as it will lead us astray from the very qualities that make us a unique and beautiful community. People live in River Falls for the small-town qualities. They live here because they like the strong sense of community, and most importantly at this time, they cherish the natural beauty throughout and surrounding our community. As citizens of River Falls, we share a common heritage of agricultural roots and hard work in preserving our landscape, yet this drive for irreversible destruction of our open spaces shows no sign of slowing. If you do not take your responsibility seriously, it won't be long until we become so expansive that we will lose our sense of community and we will lose our unique identity. I urge you to take the time to think about and to identify the qualities of this wonderful community, and after doing so, if you decide to continue to pursue this plan, which you have so eagerly put into action, it will speak volumes to the people that you are supposed to be representing. These are my beliefs as a citizen of River Falls.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. John, was there anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, he tells me there's no others online, so we'll start with in person. We have 12 people signed up.
Okay, thanks, Jason.
Neil Gilbertson from River Falls here. I've been taxpayer here for 30, for 50 years. If you build this here, two plaques or this, all these, this big building there, the only thing that's going to get, only thing that's going to get benefits, that park is that big, that big building there. Me as a taxpayer, I'm paying for that park, and they're getting the benefits for it. That's, then they're going to get, I'm scared about the traffic. I live on Division Street there. I'm scared to death about the traffic coming out of there and trying to slow it down. And that's difficult already, and now when I have more traffic, and that's not good. There's, they're going to be, they're going to be built, then it's going to, you're going to find out, it's going to be just a mess, and there's going to be, you've got to add on or do a call of sec or something. Us taxpayers got to pay for that, and the only thing that's going to get benefit is that, the big building there in the park, just plugging up the park. I think you should really think it over, think about if you're doing the right thing and do a common sense thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I should thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Hi, I'm Zarka Stancovich. I moved to River Falls from Milwaukee, and I bought a twin home on Division Street. I live just west of Westside Elementary School. Subsequently, I've made interior and exterior improvements accessing $100,000, including a fenced-in courtyard for a safety net for my pets and visiting grandchildren. The additional traffic from this housing project will become hazardous, resulting in accidents and possible death along with deterioration to the road. If road improvements are required, as I heard that they may come in the future, such as widening the road, sidewalks, traffic lights, et cetera, I do not have funds for any of these assessments. I am a retired, single person living in my twin home. I am not in favor of this development for the following reasons. I live on West Division Street. This two-lane road will not be able to handle the increased traffic. There was a study done by the city for this development that showed that this high-density apartment would increase car trips along Division Street more than 500 times a day. There are children that ride bikes to Westfield Elementary, and how will this road remain safe for them? High-density three-story housing is not consistent with the architecture of the existing homes along this road. As I saw in the presentation prior, the three-story project is three stories high, and it is not almost the same elevation as to the homes that are on the south side of the road. It is three stories. It will be close to the road. It will look like a monstrosity as you're driving in from the west side of Division Street, and when you're on the east side of Division Street, you won't even know that the park exists there anymore, because these homes will have made it basically their private park in their backyard. I'd be interested in seeing, well, I did see now the site elevations and things like that. Number four, the cost to rent these townhomes as a renter, somebody would be better off buying a home in River Falls, and I can tell you that as a senior. As a senior, I was able to afford the twin home that I purchased. I would not be able to afford the three-bedroom units that this townhome project will require. They will only have eight three-bedroom units. I can tell you, as a senior citizen, no senior citizen wants to downsize to a small one-bedroom apartment. They want a minimum of two, all on one level. So this does not address that as well. I feel this development would be better suited to areas, as it was mentioned before, where you can walk grocery shop, go to restaurants, do things like that, something that River Falls is highly lacking, and we don't even have any public transportation to get you there. The city has multiple projects going on. I'd like to see how those pan out first before we move ahead with something this large. I'd like the city to also look at developing the downtown three-block area to make it a destination for other people in other small areas around here. Also, the space where Shopko is, to me, would be an ideal location for this twin home, as it would be walking distance to some fast-food restaurants, a couple grocery stores, some other gas stations and things like that, along with being close to Highway 35 and 65. Additionally, I just want to mention that this project has been moving along, just like Tiffany had mentioned, with a lack of community engagement throughout this whole process. Our city is only 15,000 people. There is no reason why this should not have been shared with the rest of the community in a better way, where they would have been able to have some viable input as to what is going on. Again, I oppose this project. I feel it would be better suited in another area. I'm not complaining because I don't want to see growth. In my city, I do want to see growth, but not this many units just plunked in one area of town.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Stosovich.
Hi, my name is Patricia LaRue. I've been a resident of River Falls for over 50 years, and I serve on the Plan Commission, and I'm chairperson for the Park and Rec Advisory Board. In February of this year, I met with Amy Peterson. Ms. Peterson asked me if I was in favor of a development on the land south of De Sanctus Park, and I said I was, and I own that statement. As a member of the Plan Commission, at the end of May, I received an email telling me the Plan Commission would not be meeting in June and providing me a development design proposed for De Sanctus Park. A three-story, 88-apartment project was not what I was expecting. The email told me to comment before the next city council meeting. I sent questions via email. It took over three days of back-and-forth emails to address my questions. I tried a telephone conversation with Brandy Powell, but the city had installed a new telephone system, and it sounded like I was talking into a tunnel. There was no ability for the commission to meet, vote, or bounce ideas off each other. But more importantly, there was no opportunity for the public involvement. The most important segment of the decision-making process, the public, lost its first chance to speak. The park board was completely bypassed. I appeared before the city council to address my concerns and was told I had two minutes to talk. De Sanctus Park has been there since 1994. The 2018 housing study projects out into 2030. I don't see a compelling reason why now, when our government is working with one hand tied behind its back due to the pandemic, why we must make a decision on the future of this property tonight. The De Sanctus property was purchased with taxpayer money. 500 residents, and this is residents, not everybody who signed the petition, but 500 at least, have asked that we just apply the breaks. I think they deserve to be part of the discussion, the solution, and the final determination. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaRue.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I first want to say thank you for the time to speak. My name is Eric Amundson. I reside at 500 Marcella Court. I live in the cul-de-sac, which is right on the east end of De Sanctus Park, so this project does affect myself, as it does Ms. LaRue, who just spoke before me, who happens to be my neighbor. As she stated back in the mid-'90s, the De Sanctus family had donated the land to the city and entered into a covenant agreement with the De Sanctus family, also known as the Ryan De Sanctus Trust, that it would be used as a quiet-nature-style park with several stipulations, with some of them being the following. One, the park would secure funds to develop the park within a One, the park would secure funds to develop the park within a reasonable time. Two, all planning, engineering, construction, and other work necessary to develop the park shall be the responsibility of the city. Number three, no organized league sports are allowed in the park. No tournaments of any league sport shall be allowed in the park. The park shall be family, a family-oriented park. Any facilities or activity center constructed at the park will not be designed to standards necessary for organized competitive team sports. Also, a walking and jogging path shall be constructed. Picnic tables and overhead pavilions for picnics will be allowed. And also, a nature center shall be constructed for educational purposes. That just kind of lays out the design there, that the Ryan De Sanctus Park was originally created and designated to be, according to the covenant, a quiet-nature themed park. Also, around that time, the De Sanctus family purchased the approximately seven-plus-acre property and planned on using that as an R1 low-density housing that flows with the surrounding neighborhoods and area of town, and also according to the city's plan.
15 seconds.
I'm sorry?
Oh, 15 seconds. Continue.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to speak on the, on the time limit, and I do understand, as a previous elected official, I know that, Mr. Mayor and council members, that you do not want to be bored with a lot of repetitive things, but I, I really want to let you know that I have some important things here that really are going to impact your decision-making as, as council members. And this is a project, a huge project, Mr. Mayor and council members, that affects my life, not just me, but my neighbors and everyone else. So, Mr. Mayor, with your permission, I really would like just a little bit of additional time. I'm almost finished, if that's okay.
Well, we, we gave Mrs., we let other people go over a little bit, so you got another 30 seconds, Eric.
Well, I'm going to do my best to finish it up.
There you go.
Anyway, the property was sold and basically that it is to, you know, a low-density, and now the city is proposing a high-density housing going against the zoning and intended purpose of the property. Mr. Mayor and council, while I do understand the council has the authority to put a PUD in here, it doesn't necessarily make it right and it truly does not fit in the type of established neighborhoods that are already there in the park. Not only is this city proposing going from an R1 low-density housing, they're going to a much higher, all the way to an R3 high-density, and with the city code basically from 8.1 units to 12 units per acre, the city is actually proposing to go up to 18 units per acre.
Three and a half minutes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Amundson.
I have a few more things, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
By May. You know, I just, I also wanted to point out, Mr. Mayor, that you guys have a council packet of over 200 pages and that a quarter of that was just in signatures and comments from people. You know, as Ms. LaRue stated, Mr. Mayor, these are not, there may be people in there that are, that are outside of River Falls, but more than half of them were City of River Falls residents.
Thank you, Mr. Amundson. We've seen all the, we've seen it all.
I understand that, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'm trying to point out information that's pertinent to you.
No, we, we have all the information you have, too. We're just trying to give everybody a chance to talk. Who's, who's next? I, I can't, I cannot hear Mr. Amundson.
Can you hear me now?
There you go. Thank you, Eric. We appreciate your talk.
Mr. Mayor, the reason I was stating is that I have information that's pertinent to the decisions you're going to make, and there are numerous, literally dozens of people that are interested in hearing these, these points of interest.
Thank you, Mr. Amundson. Who's next?
For the record, Mr. Mayor, I'm extremely disappointed in the decision to let, limit the public's input in tonight, in this public, in this project. Extremely disappointed.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having me up here. I'm Jillian Ayers. I live at 1583 Covey Drive. I was here at the August 11th reading and I, when I heard some things that council had said, a couple of them bothered me, that this is not a community park, it's a neighborhood park. We have a pretty good neighborhood, but the reason it's not getting the use that you think it should is because there's no parking. If we had parking over there, I mean, it, it would make a big difference as to the number of people. The other thing I wonder about is when you took the number of vehicles. I don't know when that was, going up and down M Street or Division. Was it taken during the COVID time, which we're still in? Because a lot of people were not working and they were working from home. And the other thing that bothered me is when I found out, and this was at the council meeting, was that that was single-family zoning. And it was made comment that we're going to have to change that zoning and once someone up there said, "No problem, we can change it." You can change it. I mean, I can't change, I just, I just don't understand how you can just at a snap of your finger say, "We're going to change that zoning to suit our needs," and not think about the needs of the people who are there, who are the residents, and who do enjoy looking at that park. I'm not going to say anything else because it would be redundant of what everyone else said. I've learned a lot here. I'm sick at heart feeling that what we say really isn't of any importance, that this is going, I've been told that from someone else, that this is a done deal and I'm wasting my time.
15 seconds.
I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mayor, council members, and city staff, thank you for allowing the residents to speak on half of the Milltown project. I am really disappointed you're only allowing two, two minutes. This is a public hearing. With that being said, I sent you all an email regarding my concerns with this project earlier this month. Tonight, I'd like to cover some additional points.
What's your name, sir?
My name is Craig Hoffland. I live on 150 Kuzlick Street. Sorry. So, I'm new to the Planning Commission effective July of 2020. I wanted to take a part in the Planning Commission because I genuinely, genuinely care for this community. And I want to see it grow and prosper, so I'm not against development. I missed my first Planning Commission because I was on vacation. That was the meeting on August 4th, and I have since watched and reviewed the meeting online a couple of times. In my absence, the vote for this plan was tied at three to three, which I believe means a no vote. And I'm here tonight to tell you that I'm against this plan and I would have voted no if I was in attendance, making this a three-to-four no vote. And I would like the council to take that into consideration. This means the Planning Commission is no longer in favor of amending the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. I'm against the planned unit development and the specific implementation plan for the Milltown residences. I believe that the council moved too quickly and needs to reexamine and fine-tune this plan so it works for our city. If the council does, does not listen to the Planning Commission, why do we have a Planning Commission? The council must also listen, and not just hear, but to really listen to the people of the community. This, this building is full of them tonight. The council chambers is full, there's overflow, there's people online. Please listen. I personally heard from several of these people who have expressed concerns on this project. So I'm here today to ask you to think outside the box and I challenge you to think differently about the direction the city, the comprehensive plan, and especially this Milltown plan. I know the history of this property. Am I done? I know the history of the property.
That was two minutes, Mr. Mayor.
And I appreciate, pardon me?
Can, can you finish up, Mr. Hoffland?
Okay, yep, I'm almost done.
Thank you.
Well, I know, and I appreciate Amy's presentation, and I've seen that before. I get the numbers. I, I know that, I, I understand that the park was funded with the state stewardship grant, which restricts development of parkland. Therefore, all non-public development must occur. So I get that, but this is unfortunate and it's short-sighted, city-community-park philosophy. I also read that the road in Stormwater may be allowed on the parkland with permission from the DNR. So is this a good idea? I don't think so. So the vision of the city, the future development must be reexamined because it's based on a 10-year-old comprehensive plan with old data. As you all know, things move faster these days and we need to be out in front. And again, like we said, we're getting there.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffland.
Wow.
Who's ever next?
Good evening, members of the city council and other people listening. My name is Mike Reich. I live at 1306 Roosevelt Street. It's the last house on Roosevelt Street. De Sanctus Park surrounds my house, my little south and to the west. I've been there for 35 years and watched the park develop. In fact, we fed some of the Air Force people that worked on the park when it was built a long time ago. I'm really concerned about the density issue. If you take Division Street and just call it a straight line, and you look at South Division Street for the same distance that the park is going to take up, there are two single-family homes there and there are nine duplexes along the road there. So that represents 20 families on that whole stretch of road and on the south side. Now we'll take a look at the north side and the proposed plan here is to put 84 units on that side of it, 84 on one side, 20 on the other. Obviously, huge difference. There are going to be 12 units per acre, and I understand that, that the normal density per acre for homes is two and a half homes per acre. This represents, the new, the new development would represent five times greater density than normally exists, and I would oppose any variances to allow a density that's that far off of normal density. Perhaps 250 people will be living there, coming and going each day. So density was one thing I wanted to mention. Second thing is that the character of the west side of town. Why build a wall along Division Street? There should be walls of people out of the park or walls of people into the park, can't see out of it. There are, to my knowledge, there are no
15 seconds.
Structures on the west side that sound similar to that. We see some right over here, just outside here, and we see some on the south side of town, east side. We don't see any there. Also, one last thing, legal guidelines.
Two minutes.
In order for a, a motion to be approved here, it needs to come from committee, go to the city council. It seems like the committee never worked on it in the first place and went right to the council. So if the council sort of recommends this plan to themselves, is that really a fair judgment to do it like that? Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Reich.
Hi, my name's Rain O'Keefe and I live at 13 Dry Run Road, so I'm directly affected to this development. And my biggest concerns, they've all actually been covered already, except for a couple of them. I've tried a few times. My husband and I both have tried to reach out to different, the mayor and different council members, wondering what the plan is for the light pollution, because all of the traffic that's going into this new development is facing right into our bedroom windows in our home. And the trees that are there now don't cover enough, so you're going to add, what, how many, 100 extra cars going to all these new homes? I'd like to know what the plan is because it's, it's going to be a huge problem for not only my property, but the other people on the backside of Dry Run. So that's the biggest concern I have, as well as everything everybody's already, already covered. And I'd like to know, how much research has been done on getting grants or donations from different ecological societies? You say you have a concern about who's going to pay to bring in city sewer water to, to the schoolhouse. How much research has been done on that from different, different programs that could possibly fund that? I haven't heard any mention of anything like that, and I'm sure that there's opportunities out there that people would help support that. So that's about all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Ms. O'Keefe.
Hello, I'm Dan Nelson. I live at 1622 Maple Street. So I'm against the proposal first, and I signed the petition. The property owners seem to be the city, but they never told us that they were the property owner. When the property was going to be developed two to three years ago, the language they used was a property owner, even though the city was the owner. We were not aware. The property, I feel, in this was deceptive to the community. Second, people were already upset, 42 units were going into this small space of land. And then it doubled. Third, it mentioned that seniors may be a part of it. Seniors do not buy three-story units. Then young professionals were going to buy it. Anyone knows with common sense, three-story townhouses are going to have a constant turnover of people. Nobody really wants to live in a three-story, high-density unit. Fourth, the damage that will be done will be 100 years or more. The city builds this 81-84-unit structure, it will always be an eyesore for the rest of our lives. We ask ourselves, why do we let this happen? Fifth, I live on Maple Street, the only bridge besides Division people use to get downtown. Traffic is constantly speeding and ignoring stop signs. If we allow another 80 units, it'll only be a matter of time before an avoidable accident will happen. Auto traffic on Division comes in at 55 miles an hour plus. Cars turn on a corner in Maple practically on two wheels. These roads are not designed for high-density traffic. Ms. Peterson made a lot of great points, but only for one side. She didn't look at the community. She only looked at the development that she wanted. That is the same material that I found out when I was a college student at the University of River Falls. High-density, high-density, high-density. We'll have magic sidewalks that'll float us from one place to another. I don't see this thing benefiting anything in the community, and the community needs to stand against this crap.
Two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
My name is Adrian Amundson. I live at 310 North Horse Street, so this project doesn't impact me all that much, but I do have concerns about it. And seeing as how you cut my son off on his time, I'm picking up his cause as well. Some research has gone and there is not one nearby city within miles of River Falls in the size of River Falls that has a major apartment complex directly connected to a city regional park. Simply could not find one anywhere. I'm not against developing it, as well as, and not events developing this parcel of land, and I, as well as many others, want it to be developed according to the city's plan and actual zoning that is already in place for this land, R1 low-density. There are other proposals that have been presented, presented to this prop, for this property that will abide by the zoning and surrounding residents are in agreement with. I fully understand that the city is in need of housing of this type, but this property is not the place for it. For this size of project, we need to plan accordingly a new development that can actually accommodate a project of this size and not place it in R1 low-density residential neighborhood. Not only does this project not fit into the neighborhood, it will have a huge impact on traffic and the city's current level of parking spaces required is no, is nowhere near enough the amount of spaces that would be needed for a project of this size. I know that it is enticing to want to do this project when a developer is willing to pay for a few things that the city has wanted to have over the years. But again, at what cost do we do this deal and affect negatively all the surrounding residents who made the decision to live in a low-density, quiet neighborhood? I request that the council reject this project and take time to properly plan and development for this parcel of land. I would like to see it go to the park board for suggestions and also planning conditions for suggestions. There are many opportunities that this land, this parcel of land could be used for, including small neighborhood businesses, like a small office of some sort even. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Amundson.
Mr. Mayor, we have no further
Okay.
Members who have signed up.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, so we will close the public hearing and I will take a motion, open up the council hearing and I'll take a motion on ordinance 2020-07. and I'll take a motion on ordinance 2020-07.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we amend the comprehensive plan and future land use map for the Man Valley and De Sanctus Park vicinity.
Second.
Okay, first and the second. I'll give all the council members a chance to talk. Whoever wants to go first?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go first.
Yep, go ahead, Sean.
So I want to start by thanking everybody who came and voiced their concerns and cautions tonight. And I agree, we haven't done a very good job of community engagement on this. And I'm going to elaborate a little bit about that. But first, I just want to talk about why I'm against the current zoning proposal on this. It paves the way for a project that our community is loudly saying no to. I believe that the officials acted in what I'd called good faith. However, there wasn't a process designed specifically for a regional park and what we would call housing in this case. It's not affordable housing, and it's market rate at most. We could do a project half this density and be successful for our community and for our city and bring in comparably almost the same amount of funds if we do it properly. It wouldn't attack the rest of the zone if we kept it separate. And we could do that and be, and make everybody happy and satisfy what the community is asking for us. Um... So typically, I'm not in favor of saying no to a zoning adjustment after a general development plan has been approved. However, I'm talking about how this affects what goes into the zone when I say this. In my opinion, this whole process was rushed through by our executive team and our city developer, focusing only on the housing need and not the fact it's a future regional park. We never had a chance for the actual community engagement. That is a fact that is not going away. The petition of well over 1,000 signatures, I think, was it 1,400 or so, a majority coming from of that, coming from our community, are telling us to vote no tonight on this project that includes the zoning. So I believe we need to take a step back and work with our community to get it right. I will be voting no. Our Plan Commission is no longer in favor of this current proposal, as we've heard tonight, that would go into the zone, which means for me as a council member, I am against the zone change for the part that is in De Sanctus Park specifically, because of how zoning and density would drastically affect the park in negative ways. We need to hear what our Plan Commission can agree to first before rolling out a vote. This proposal, in my opinion, does not meet the expectations of the majority of the Plan Commission, the expectations of the community, or my own personal expectations as a council member, based on what the best results should focus on. We need better community engagement so we can get whatever that goes into the zone done correctly. I'm a definite no vote. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take a quick moment to point something out. Peter and Susan De Sanctus, who gave the city to the land to develop the charm of the park, have said in the petition, no, this is not what we intended for the city to do when we look at, when we took ownership, and would encourage everyone to keep that in mind when they vote tonight. And that's why I will be a no vote on this current proposal. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That, I'm muted again. Who's next? Would you like to say something next?
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Watson.
You know, one of the things that I've always said to myself and to other people, the people that I represent, is that I come into every single one of these meetings with an open mind. And I listen, and I've gotten a lot of emails, and they have made me question, and I think rightly so, some of my assumptions. So this is a tough vote for folks, for me. Maybe it's not tough for other people, but I am, I just, I want to point out a couple of things. First of all, I have a vision for a regional park in this area that is much more significant than just what is in De Sanctus right now. And I think that the, that the land use, the future land use change gets us close to that vision, but it doesn't quite get us all the way there. For the folks that are in the audience and for my fellow council members, I do want to point out that I think many of you know that I have argued for the environment, for conservancy land and a whole bunch of other natural areas all over town over the last 20 years on the Plan Commission and City Council. You know, this proposal essentially takes seven, or five acres, four acres, four-plus acres, and develops it as it was planned originally, not as it was planned, but that some development would occur there. But brings in over 124 acres of conservancy and open space land to the north and to the west. I think that, I do think that we're going to need to take a pause here and kind of look at the bigger picture. We have an opportunity to take the conservancy land that we're looking at in the future land use plan that's up on the top of the mound, to extend that across the entire mound and tie that in potentially through into De Sanctus Park. And then on the west side, where the school district owns land, Lot 10, 38 or 36 acres or so, ties the park into an extensive area of open space where swale, where water would be flowing essentially. And, you know, that gigantic, and potentially we can connect up in the north back to the conservancy land up on the mound. You know, we would be looking at a regional park of, you know, almost, I don't know, maybe almost 200 acres. You know, if we can convince the, convince the school district to let us make a connection along their property with some trails and so forth. So my point is that I'd like the Plan Commission, or I'd like city staff to take a little bit of a wider look at this future land use plan to include some of the property to the east that hasn't been included up to now, because we really just are looking at the, at the area that's in the, in the business park. For everyone, for, you know, all of, I think the residents need to understand that this area is going to change and this area is going to grow. We have a large business park that we are committed to and have been committed to for the past almost, I don't know, seven or eight years at least. You know, just to the west on Division Street, and that is, that is, that is, I think, a done deal. That is going to be a major piece of our community. And those people who work in that business park need, will need a place to live. So anyway, the second, or the other point I want to make while I have the floor right now is that in my mind, and in my conversations with city staff, this is either, I mean, either we develop this, this parcel, this, along Division Street, or we don't. So for all the people out there who oppose the current development plan, and I know there's a lot of them, we are looking, I'm looking to you, because really what we've got to do is, we've got $200,000 that we've invested in this already, in this parcel that we bought. We've got $1 million worth of investment at least into parking, as one of the speakers said, getting sewer into the building down the hill, and, you know, building out that trail system. And, you know, this tax increment district is, has been part of the plan. But in my conversations with the developer and with others, you cannot fund that. I mean, basically, we're going to have to fund it through taxes. No one is going to build single-family homes on this land. You can't make any money off of it. We're not going to put a strip mall there, and I don't think anybody would be in favor of that who's already signed the petition. We're not going to build, you're not going to have a, the only other thing that you could do to generate that kind of income would be a high-rise apartment building, or not apartments, a high-rise or some kind of office building. So really, what the residents are asking us to do is come up with a million and a half or $1,000,200, you know, and plus some more study to kind of tie this whole thing together. And we're going to swallow the $200,000 that we've already spent here and turn it into part of the park. I mean, I think that's really what folks are asking us to do. And so at this point, you know, like I said, my mind is open to hear what other council members have to say. But I've got, I've got a lot on my mind right now. Thank you.
Okay, who's ever next? Who'd like to go next?
Mr. Mayor, I'll go next if I could.
Mr. Marseth?
There's a couple of things that I just, and maybe staff will jump in here if I, if I don't, if I don't have these right. But there was a couple of comments that were made by citizens that I heard, and I want to make sure that they're clarified. The first one was with regard to the rezoning, and the comment that somebody on the council said, or somebody said something about, well, we'll just, we'll just rezon it. The zoning is not going to change on this property. I don't recall anybody ever making a comment in the council about how we'll just rezon it in a flippant manner. I certainly wouldn't be part of that conversation or think anybody else in the council would be. I just, I just want to clarify that. I'm not sure where that comment came from, but we're, this zoning is not going to change. This is going to stay in our one zone with a PUD overlay. I think there was a comment made about the city owning the land, and maybe it was deceptive at a prior time. Just to clarify, and this is where I think where staff can maybe help me. The city did not buy the land until we were down the road with the Gerards, after the Gerards had proposed their project to us and we were moving forward. The city bought the land because, as Mr. Watson has pointed out, we wanted to use that as an incentive in order to get some other things, such as the road, the sewer, the electric down to the schoolhouse, and put some, put some infrastructure in. So I don't, I don't want to come across, I don't want us to come across as deceptive, but I think at the time that the Gerard property was being discussed with the public, we did not own the land. We bought the land as we moved forward with the Gerards as a way to incentivize that development. That didn't happen, and now we own the land, and that's, that's another subject that I won't go into right now. There was a comment made about moving this to another site in town. The Shopko site was mentioned. I just want to clarify with the public that the developers put their capital at risk. We are going to incentivize them a little bit here, as we've done other projects in town. But the developers put their capital at risk. The Shopko building is a private site. We do not dictate what goes into that Shopko site. We can't, we can't pick this project up and then take it to Shopko and say, you're going to have no choice but to do this. That's, that's, that's not the way that that works. So I just want to be sure that, that the public understand that we don't dictate what goes into different sites. People bring development projects to the city, and then we react to them based on our zoning, our land use maps, our guidelines, our different requirements for the construction. There are projects around town right now that are being done that I don't necessarily think are the best use for that piece of property, but they're putting their capital at risk. And the developer in this case is going to put his capital at risk. We heard a lot of people say, people aren't going to move into those. Well, I hope that's not the case, but if it is, the developer will be the one at risk here, and they'll be the one that'll have to figure out how best to address that, address that risk. Mr. Watson also pointed out the fact that Man Valley is going to develop. This is, this is an area that is going to change over time. And I know that the residents have not, have not seen a development like this on this side of town yet. But that, that, that Man Valley is, as Mr. Watson said, a long-term project that we are committed to. I've heard comments from people about, oh, you're just, you're just doing this for the tax revenue, and you're just doing this for, for, for the money. You're just doing it for the money. There is, there is a financial impact at play here, that's correct. We are charged with being stewards of the city's finances and with being able to make sure that we can do things like increase the amenities at Glenn Park with a splash pad and a new shelter, or work on the Hoffman Park plan, or do things like put safety improvements in with an off-ramp over by Hoffman Park. These things aren't specific to one area. These are things that help the city maintain good streets, snow plowing, you know, proper putting in sidewalks and different infill projects that we have around town. This does have an impact, but it is not the driving force for me here. I will point that out. There's a history on this, on this property. I just want to make sure that we review. At one point, we talked about, on a very, very preliminary basis, had a staff discussion about, do we swap this land with another piece of land in the park and do some single-family infill to the east? And the residents heard about this, and we were inundated before it was even on the agenda. It never even got to an agenda item, with people telling us that that's not what they wanted. The Gerard project came along, and we were inundated with people saying that's not what they want. And, and now we're, now we've got inundated with, with these responses. I appreciate community involvement, but I heard tonight somebody say, well, I like the Gerard project better. We can't go back and revive those things, unfortunately. We have in front of us today, what we have, it does things, since I've been on the council, that schoolhouse has sat there not being used. I've been on the council for 10 years. That thing cost us a dollar, and I think we've got $100,000 plus invested in that schoolhouse already. And this is an avenue to get that schoolhouse usable. It also addresses the realignment of Dry Run Road and Bob White, which I've had over the years many calls from residents concerned about that traffic site. This is going to allow us to maybe put some crosswalks in or do some traffic calming or signage that allows crossing to happen there in a more safe way. So there are a lot of benefits to this. I do not downplay for a minute the number of people who are concerned about this. But I, I think I'm in favor of this project and think it's, it's going to be a benefit to the park long-term and to the city. Thank you.
Who would like to go next?
Mr. Mayor, I can go next.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Gagne. Then Diane, you'll be next.
You know, I share the sentiment, excuse me. I share the sentiment from the previous two council members that spoke, Alder Person and Watson, and Alder Person, Marseth. I'll start by saying, you know, this is a tough one. I've got two projects on both sides of my neighborhood that are going in. One is an affordable housing project, one's a market rate. And, you know, I've heard my share from my neighbors that I live with every day in the neighborhood about the extra traffic. And we're actually a community that gets a lot of traffic and some speeding. And, you know, I've done my work of trying to mitigate some of that, working with staff and the PD and the neighborhoods as far as trying to report some of this stuff and making sure that these measures are taken care of. It's definitely not a dull issue for me. I totally understand the concerns of the residents, and I appreciate them coming forward. But I've also seen the history. I've been on council since 2012. I've worked really hard to try to listen to all of the residents' concerns and try to balance the pros and the cons, good from the bad. And it's a very tough challenge to do, to make everybody happy. And unfortunately, it's, you're going to have some people that might not feel happy in the end. But I hope that with a project like this, that we can invite new neighbors into the community and invite a project, whether it's this or another project, and be open to that. If this project doesn't go in this location, it's going to go right on the other side of that little bridge right there towards the school district property. You know, we're going to grow out that way. It is the edge of our community. Just like any other community that starts growing, you look at River Falls from the inception of River Falls. growing, um, you look at River Falls from the inception of River Falls, um, how many of those neighborhoods right over on Covey, um, right across the street weren't there? And then their neighbors had a um issue with some growth. I mean, it's, it's natural that we're going to grow. I understand um the R1 versus the PUD um concept that we're hearing. Um, I think this is a great use of space in the long run. It's not going to impact, um, heavily impact people that want to walk through the park or enjoy that park. In fact, it's only going to benefit them based on a lot of the things that we've heard tonight. Um, and, you know, flipping a bunch of other property into conservancy and paths and um some more parkland into the city um towards the school property to the west and up over on top of the tabletop. I think that's a great win for the whole neighborhood because that'll never be developed. I mean, a lot of that area. And it creates a nice buffer from the other side over there from that business park, uh corporate park. Um, I, I just, I have a hard time with the concept that, you know, I don't want it in my neighborhood when it's an open field and we have a ton of growth that's going to eventually happen that way. I mean, we can try to prolong that um five, 10, 15 years, but unfortunately, I mean, it's going to happen and it's not necessarily an unfortunate thing, but we're going to grow. Um, I like a lot of the amenities and the benefits that a project like this brings. Um, I think it's going to bring um suitable housing for a lot of people. Um, I'm a person, my, my career is walking around to real estate um and talking to new people moving into their homes um about certain things that I, for my business. Um, I think this property here isn't much different than our region um or Hudson or River Falls or in Richmond. It's very similar. Um, and, and you got projects like this um right on a main highway. It's within walking distance to a school and potentially another school down the road. Um, it's on a main artery going in and out of the city. Um, I think that road structure is definitely suitable for the traffic flow. Um, just like any other city uh street in the um community. Yes, there's going to have to be improvements, but a lot of these improvements that have been cried about uh from uh Historic Preservation Commission members, when I first got on council, um, that schoolhouse was a huge contention for a lot of residents that wanted to use that schoolhouse. And there was a lot of grant opportunities and a lot of other things that were looked at and some people raised money for that, but we haven't quite gotten there um to be able to make it suitable to open it up to the public. And I think it's finally there. Um, this just brings in that sewer, the water, so our school district, our clubs, our kids can start using this project or this property. Um, it brings parking that a lot of people have been talking about for years um in this park. Granted, there's dry run road. Um, and I've went over there. I've flown my drone over in the park. I've walked my daughter over in that park um many times and I just don't see a lot of people besides a couple of people walking through there. Um, now that they have some playthings, I see a little bit more families in there. Um, but I think this park is definitely underutilized uh for a regional city park. Um, my last point would be this whole park was originally dedicate, designated as housing. Um, it was going to be single-family housing. Um, I know I heard one thing about light pollution. I live right across from some public housing in my neighborhood and I got people that drive in and out at all times of the day. I bought blackout curtains. Um, now I don't deal with that. I deal with some noise uh because it's right outside 20, 30 feet from my front door. But this is all set back. Um, th- these are all concerns I think the rest of the community has as well. Um, and um, i- i- it's a, it's a very big struggle for me when, when I think of a, this whole park being houses at one time versus a park. So I, I think the neighborhood won in the big picture. You're going to have one main road, one in and out for these uh folks. They're not coming through the uh neighborhoods that are already constructed unless they go off the beaded path to get downtown and want a big uh detour. I, I, I think using a main road is definitely going to be a benefit. Uh, I think I'll be voting in favor of this.
So Diane, you had your hand up, sorry.
Um, yes, I just um, uh, I just want to, um, before us, we have amending the comprehensive plan and the future land use map, which um I will have some comments about the specific implementation plan, but right now I just want to talk about the comprehensive plan. Um, and I appreciate uh, I appreciate Mr. Watson's vision for um a, a bigger conservancy area. And that's one of the things I like about this comprehensive plan is um how, how it, it does incorporate some large green spaces, some um, some conservancy areas that will um, you know, make this a uh, a, a very attractive industrial park. Um, hopefully it will bring in uh lots of, lots of businesses of the type that we want in River Falls. So I will be voting in favor of um, of amending the comprehensive plan.
Who's going next? Okay, not missing anybody, so let's go on. And we have a, uh, we have first and second.
Mr. Plunkett, Mr. Plunkett.
Go ahead, Mr. Plunkett. I didn't see you.
Uh, thank you. I, I appreciate everyone coming in to comment here tonight uh on the issue of the uh housing development. And I also uh, uh appreciate that the motion before us here is on the comprehensive plan and we'll, we'll get back to those other issues soon. Um, I think that the parkland, people have mentioned the expansion that is included with this comprehensive plan uh is going to be an incredibly valuable addition to the uh city in the future. And uh, I think that uh overall, while I have, as many people have expressed, some uh things that I think could be done differently, I want to uh state that overall, I think that this plan meets the needs of the city as well as planning for the future expansion that we know is coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions for our city administrator regarding this.
The implementation, the comprehensive plan and future land use map?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Simpson, would the comprehensive plan um and land use map allow for zoning of uh high density with the Gerard Corporation project since, and would that bring in the same amount of money if not more, but have less density in that zone, which would might be a better compromise because it can bring in potentially even more money or the same and develop all the regional park area uh the way the rest of the council is talking about, which I also enjoy, but I think it's the density our community is asking us to look at in this zone and be uh, and we should be concerned about what they're asking us tonight.
Um, let me see if I understand the question. I think the first question was, was the first question, are we changing zoning with the future land use plan?
So regarding the zone, would uh another proposal um be able to act in the same zoning sense? And I'll give you an example, the Gerard Corporation, since the rest of the council should know what that is. Um, and be able to be comparable funding, if not potentially more, to do uh all these different projects our community is asking us to do, keeping it nature conservancy, but in the sense of the community is asking more quiet and peaceful, less zoom, zoom in and out of, you know, uh hundreds of residents and more like half of that, but bringing the same amount of money.
Yeah, so the, the action in front of you on the future land use plan doesn't require the city or a developer to go up to the maximum density. So any density um at that level or below would be allowed. If you were in favor of the proposed land use, um, the future land use change, this is not changing the zoning. So even in the case of a less dense um proposals, similar to what Gerard's proposed with the 40, I think it was 42 or 44, they would still have to go through the PUD process. So essentially the, the break, so to speak, on development, the development process here is exactly what we're going through, which is the council um is expected to approve very detailed plans for anything on a PUD. Whereas if you were just going to build, say, go in and do single-family lots under the existing residential, you, you don't, you'd have some entitlement as a developer um or the landowner, if it wasn't the city um to build to that density. So um, there isn't a change here in the zoning, but you are signaling, if you do approve this, that you're, you're interested in more density on that specific piece of property than, than what you currently um have officially adopted.
And to my point, Scott, um, a project half the size of the density for that zone um based on home ownership could actually bring in the same amount of funding, if not potentially more, uh in your professional opinion.
Yeah, I think lots of things are possible. Um, but I don't know about the probability. The, these units are pretty high amenity as far as construction type compared to some of, a few of the other apartment buildings that are being built in River Falls. So there's a pretty good value per unit. Um, and the, so let's say there are 210,000 per unit to construct. Um, there's 84 of them on average. So that's, that's a fair amount of money compared to a 44 unit, even if the 44 units were at, you know, say 260 or 270 a unit. So it just depends on the math. Clearly, there's a demand. The housing costs are going up rapidly and I would, I think people have a difficult time building a twin home um of the type that, that Gerard had proposed for less than 299 or 300 a side. So um, it's possible that less density could still result in more tax taxable value. Um, certainly if there was some kind of luxury unit or luxury um condo, twin home, I, I would suspect you could get there. I'm not sure what the market would bear right now for a, say, 450,000 or $500,000 um twin right now on River Falls. They're, they're trying, they're trying some of those in Hudson, so we'll, we'll have a chance to see how that goes.
And you know, Scott, as a person who's rented eight times and still rents, you know, I see the value in having more rentals, but I also see a value in compromising what our community, with our, what our community is asking us to do. And I think we can do the Gerard Corporation plan, or not the Gerard Corporation plan, but the 360 plan to the north or to the west, not too far from the park, but not directly on top of it. And I also believe that we can get that funding, if not more, through a smaller plan base and like the Gerard Corporation plan in that zone uh that can bring in uh the funding. So we, we would be able to have what the community wants, but also have the rentals for people and expanding community. Nobody, I don't believe anybody who was aware of this project and the history of it, I think we all know that development is uh, has anticipated and expected to pay uh for the development of the park there. The, the question we're looking at from our citizens is what type of development? And what we're looking at today is only a very small fraction of rentals in their market rate of what, what could be, which we can still do, go to the north or to the west. But more importantly, I'm asking the rest of the council the value uh compromise, which could bring in the same amount of funding and, and create even more rentals at the same time. So I think we need to slow down the process and look at what's best for our community. Uh, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, respectfully, Mr. Downing, that's the market at play. That's really the market's job to decide that. I don't know that it's our job to dictate what goes where uh other than in a general communication through a comp plan or, or a South Main Street plan or something. Our job is to react to what comes to us by somebody who's willing to put their capital at play. Um, I understand what you're trying to say, that, that, that it might work better down there, but that's not what's in front of us today. I think, I think it's, I think it's, I think the city has to let the market do its thing. Uh, I don't think it's the city's position to go that deep into the market and say, no, we want you over here, we want you over there. I think that, I think the market has to dictate that. So I, I respectfully disagree with you a little bit there. Uh, but I understand where you're coming from with, with, with your vision. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, Scott? Typically, it takes about 90 days to do an RFP. What harm could it do to put out an RFP and find a compromise that can do uh both of what we're talking about and all what the council's talking about and even do more rentals? I think.
Well, in our, my, my understanding was an RFP was put out for this. We had, we had six projects submitted. Uh, we had Mr. Woolsey from the Plan Commission and some other folks. I can't remember who else was on that committee that, that sifted through those RFPs already for this property and decided that this was the best one. So I think that's already happened.
But I don't think that we had the community, the community engagement um or the community behind what we're looking at. So I think we need to, we should look at compromise that can do everything we're saying. I know it's not something that's simple I'm asking the council and I get that. And I know GDP plans are typically not walked back, but I'm not suggesting we walk it back. I'm just suggesting we put it to the north or to the west, which I believe is completely reasonable for all of us to take a hard look at and say, hey, we can do what we're asked, being asked to do, but also provide for our community in the way they're asking. I don't think 90 days um of just waiting to find a better approach is asking too much.
Okay, so who hasn't talked yet? Who'd like to talk that hasn't talked yet?
Um, I don't think I could, yeah. Oh, am I on?
Go ahead, Mr. Biersted.
Uh, I'm not going to add any comments. Everything was very well stated already. Uh, however, I'm in the construction business and this summer I was asked to price out a twin home in River Falls. Uh, a former neighbor of ours owns a, a twin home lot right here in town. In fact, it's just west of the McDonald's there. I can't remember the name of the street. Two-bedroom, two-bath, uh unfinished basement, so basically a rambler, kind of a split level sort of thing. Uh, I think each, each had two, two-car garages, if I remember right. Uh, I was well north of $600,000, not including land, to build that building, two units. So that's why all of this discussion is kind of moot because the math doesn't lie. It is what it is. And construction costs year over year have gone up 24% from this time last year. Okay? With, we, you just can't do affordability without density. It's just simple math.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Biersted.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Watson.
Um, I, I really appreciate that, uh, Mr. Biersted. I think, you know, it just confirms, you know, my thought and, and Mr. Downing, I, I, I am going to respectfully disagree with you that there is a middle road here. I don't think there is a middle road. I think either, either we do, either we add to the park and swallow a couple hundred thousand dollars and figure out how we're gonna um, uh, how we're going to uh fund the amenities and uh maybe all the neighbors want to pony up a million bucks, you know, for some, for and, or the city as a whole. And um, you know, I think that's basically where we're headed if, if, if we don't approve this project. Um, again, I, I have a vision for, for uh, you know, for those that are concerned about the loss of environmental uh land, so to speak. Um, I think there's a big gain here uh overall. And so, um, you know, and uh also to Mr. Gagne's point, I think he made some really good points. Uh, one of which is, is, you know, every other part of the city has some element of multifamily housing happening uh in it, high-density housing happening in it. And uh, you know, the, the, this, this part of town hasn't had that yet, but it's certainly on the way in one form, shape or another. And so um, I just want to acknowledge uh those comments from my fellow council members and, and say thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Watson. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have one last question for Mr. Simpson, if that's okay with you.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Downing.
Um, Mr. Simpson, was there ever a formal community engagement process that was done for the current proposed project of 360?
There was nothing done outside of the, the GDE and SIP process.
So we never solicit the public for their opinion on any of this, is what you're telling me?
Well, we've now had two public hearings um as part of, part of our formal process. So there is a formal process and.
I'm suggesting more of a process, much like the Kiny Court our process, where we invited the city to come in and um have say with how they feel, whether they're for or against it. Did we ever have a formal proposal put forth by our development department?
No, and neither was that asked by, by stat, by uh council. So to be clear, staff is following up on strategic initiatives of the council here, so this isn't staff's project. Um. Um, or staff is providing you advice based on the the path that the council asked for, but no, the council did not instruct us to go through a. Um, a public process anywhere near the significance of a Kenny Corridor project. This was. Uh, this was a process modified in a way, um, by the pandemic, but still followed the, uh. The two public hearings and and the other processes involved with that.
Could you tell me real quick, um, Mr. Simpson, that when we talked about, um, other. Buildings in our city, um, which the council and I have always, we we've agreed on other ones. None of those were on top of a future regional park. This is a future regional park, correct?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not aware of a project like this on our other two regional parks, which are Glen Glen and Hoffman, although there's certainly. Our development plans, um, that the council has reviewed related to South Main Street that that could in fact put projects like this. Um, on or near Glen Park.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any either. All right. Well, thank you for your time, Scott. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so everybody's had a chance to talk. So Christie, we have a first and a second on ordinance twenty twenty dash zero seven, amending the comprehensive plan and future land use map.
Yes, we have a first and a second and a vote to be in favor of passing the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of order for a point of clarification or information. For you and the public. So the council understands, I believe, but I'm not sure. The public would that a vote yes on this does not approve the development project.
Nope.
This is a vote on the future land use plan, which was voted in favor by the Plan Commission. Um, I believe it was six oh, um, recommendation. But a vote on this does not require the council to approve any of the other items required for development or the development as a whole.
Right. Okay.
Okay, are we ready for the vote?
Yes.
We begin with Mr. Gagne.
Yes.
Mr. Plunkett.
Yes.
Mr. Beerstead.
Yes.
Mr. Morris Thet.
Yes.
Mr. Downing.
No.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
That was a yes?
Correct, yes.
Thank you. So it's six one with everyone voting in favor except for Mr. Downing.
Okay, thank you, Christie. Now move on to the next resolution before, uh, before we, so before we get into the rest of the resolutions for this project. Uh, we do have the developers from, um, uh, three sixty development here. If council has any questions for them moving forward through this. I'm not sure if they wanted, if if they wanted to say anything or just introduce themselves. They certainly can at this point.
We, uh, Carrie has some upstairs.
Okay, Carrie, I'm not sure if they're.
Here, ask.
If they wanted to say anything now, or they just want to wait to see if there's questions?
I think they wanted to introduce themselves.
Okay, perfect.
So, uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, Marvin Wonders and Jeremy Novak with Three Sixty Real Estate Solutions, and we're here to answer questions that you may have regarding the project.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, would this be an appropriate time to ask them questions, or would you prefer us to get a motion on the table and all that other stuff?
Yeah, we'll do all that first. Let's get a motion on the table as we move through each resolution.
Okay.
So first resolution approving is for approving the planned. Uh, unit development, the PUD. This is a specific information plan for Milltown residents, and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of number two, approval resolution approving plan term and development. Specific implementation plan for Milltown residences.
Second.
Okay, we have first and a second. So I will start with, uh, council members' comments. Who would like to go first?
Should I ask the developer a question? Uh, if I could, uh, ask, uh, you a question, I I promised the citizen in my conversations with them that I would ask this question. Um, and so I'm I'm doing so. If we were to, uh, modify the design and have. Two four-story buildings and two two-story buildings, would that, how would that impact the finances of the project? Um, and and I'm realizing I'm I'm asking you this question without any prior knowledge of the question. So you're going to have to kind of spitball it, but. Uh, if you were to stagger the heist of the building but keep the same number of units, would that, would that significantly impact the financial viability of the project?
So it's pretty hard to answer that without truly understanding what the scope of those buildings would look like. So if you start talking a four-story building, now you could be going into different code areas. Additionally, you may be required to have an elevator. Uh, may end up with a different feel. This building is designed to have more of a residential feel with front porches on it. Use that feel of a neighborhood feel if you go to more a traditional four-story. Fox style apartment building. So, you know, it's it's hard to say yes or no to that question without understanding a little more scope. I'm not sure that that would be law receivable in the, in the neighborhood, um, when you're going to more of a box style. Uh, again, this, this is designed to fit in with a residential neighborhood feel.
Okay, thank you for your efforts at answering. I appreciate it.
Okay, who'd like to go next? Yep, Mr. Watson.
You're muted, Mr. Watson.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Um, I'd like to ask the developer or the, uh, the gentleman there, could he repeat his name, please?
Let's try this. That's a little better. Um, Marvin Wonders, I'm with Three Sixty Real Estate Solutions.
Mr. Winers, thank you. Um, Mr. Winers, could you, um, talk to us or describe the the market research? Um, that you've done and and the target market in a little more detail than we've heard to this point?
Yes.
Like, how does your market research justify, you know, the 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 market, the folks that you think you're going to be able to draw into this building or set of buildings?
Yeah, there's several, uh, factors to that. First, we do, uh, both Jeremy and I independently did. Uh, research on our own within and within the region. Uh, the second piece is we actually paid a data company to do research for us. And we pay a monthly fee so that as we're looking at projects, we understand data of communities. Much like you do when you do a housing study that says this is what our community needs. So, you know, we're investing a lot of capital here. We can't be wrong on the data, right? And I think that was pointed out earlier. We have to know that when we're going to hit the mark when we do these projects. I think from a trend standpoint, if you look at this and we've seen it, we've done this exact, uh, project in two other locations. One of them is actually the neighborhood that I live in, um, and what we saw there, and this is going to trend true in River Falls as well. Is that we had young professionals that were moving to a community, uh, they may be getting their first job. They, uh, don't qualify for, uh, subsidized housing, but they need a good quality place. They may reside in this type of a project. These units have first floor units. That are all one level. We're putting in floor heat in them, uh, and you're going to attract. A certain amount of empty nesters who are downsizing. Maybe they're in a split level home. Don't want to leave the neighborhood. They like the the neighborhood, but they don't have a housing option in their in their neighborhood. So you're going to see, uh, that population as well coming into this. Um, from a regional standpoint, uh, and and also a national standpoint, the homeownership, uh, proposition is changing. Especially for people under thirty-five. One of the communities that we built this project in, we had the under thirty people that owned a home. Actually sold their home and moved into the project because guess what? They didn't like to do maintenance. They didn't want to mow their lawn. They were very transient. They, a lot of them, especially with technology, and we're experiencing this a lot now, uh, because of COVID. Uh, they want to go to other places to live and work, but have a home base. So, uh, another community we did this in, uh, was actually on a city park. And it has this spelled, it's part of Elroy State Bike Trail, the DNR State Bike Trail that goes through it. We did this exact same building on that city park, on that state bike trail. And in that scenario, we had very similar results. And we're going to see the same thing in River, River Falls. We're going to have. Young professionals that are moving to the community, uh, as you're trying to attract and retain talent, having variable, uh, types. Of housing to meet that need as your housing study pointed out, uh, we're going to see that as an end and end result of this product. So. I apologize. I was kind of a long-winded answer for, uh, for that piece, but that's how we kind of come to our conclusion.
Thank you. And 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 what are the environmental considerations of the project and how are you going to accomplish those?
So we've, we've started doing this a number of years ago, like all of our projects. Uh, we are very concerned with the environmental impact of the projects. Density is an important component. To mitigate an environmental impact. Um, the smaller footprint we have as communities because of density, the less larger impact we have from environmental standpoint. Additionally, all of our landscaping will be native plantings, uh, and we'll have food gardens in the project. And those will be focused on not just human consumption, but also wildlife consumption. So, um, you know, we. Proposed a pollinator prairie here in front of the building. We have experience with that. We actually, as a company manager project. That we put in, uh, almost fifty acres of pollinator prairie, uh, last year. And, uh, so we're in our second season of that. Um, so we have, especially from an ecology standpoint, are pretty environmentally conscious. Um, and then another component of that is really the energy consumption of the building. And the envelope of the building. So, you know, if you drive past a building and you see through wall air conditioners, you have a high energy consumptive building. Right? You're going to have baseboard heat. You're going to have through wire conditioners, and your energy consumption is going to be on way high end of the scale. And it's unfortunate because a lot of times when you see that, it's in a lower income facility. And which means lower income residents are actually paying a much higher utility cost. So it puts more burden on on their financial standpoint. In our scenario, we'll have, uh, we're using. Gas on the first level, but in floor heat in. So we'll have gas boiler systems, which is very efficient. Not only from an operation standpoint, but also from a cost standpoint for the future residents. Um, and then we'll have, uh, on the upper floors of them will have, uh. They're a kind of like a P-TAC type unit that will be the heating source and then. And we've, we've done that in a couple of different, uh, units, and they seem to be very efficient.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Downing.
Um, so hello, um, three sixty and, um, I don't want you to take this personally, but I got your phone calls, but. I answer to the voters of this city first, and we did not have a formal community engagement process regarding the future regional park. That's why I did not respond to your calls. Um, but my question for you tonight is, if I ask. If if you were asked by the city City Plan Commission, would you be willing to potentially do two projects? One that is half the Senka, like I talked about earlier tonight, and the original one we are discussing today, just a little bit away from the park, but not directly across from it. If our, if our plan commission put that in front of you by chance?
So what we were responding to, and I appreciate your comment, Sean, and also represent this history, so I understand it. That you put your position right anytime you, the development, the neighborhood that you're impacting development in. We always have some sort of pushback. It doesn't mean it's not the right thing. Neighborhood doesn't mean it's not the right thing for the end customer. It doesn't mean it's not the right thing. Long term. I understand the emotions that go along with having a development in your neighborhood.
Kind of cutting out.
So sorry about that. So I understand the. The emotional side of that, uh, living in a, in a neighborhood and and the impacts of our developments on the neighborhoods. It's why we try to make sure, and when we responded to the RFP that was put out, that we tried to do a development. It was complimentary to the neighborhood. So it wasn't an apartment building, but we got the intensity of apartment building by creating more of a brown, uh, stone rose style. Type of housing. So that was our goal when we were replying to the RFP, and that's what we're we're responding to.
Could you answer my question about the last piece? Could, if you were asked to by our plan commission, do a project that'd be half the size we're looking at and across from the St. Chris Park? And one that is the project we're talking about, uh, further down to the north as to the west?
So, um, that's a little challenging because you're, you're asking me a question of scope of real understanding for us to. Digest and even say, hey, the economics of this work. So I don't, I don't know what you're asking me. The economics would work. I don't know what that looks like.
I'm asking about the willingness of your, your company with the investment you're putting forward. Would you be willing to potentially, uh, help our city find a compromise by doing two different projects?
Wait, I think, I think right now they've all they've been asked is to do this one project and nothing else has been put in front of them. So I, I mean, I, I, I guess we're kind of putting them on the spot to ask them something like that.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. I understand that. I just want to know their perspective because. I I think we owe it to our citizens to say we exhausted our ability to interact and respond to the best of our ability. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Um, in a flyer I received from, uh, three sixty, um, in an email, it asks one, one question. Could single-family homes be planted here and sold? And the, and the response on that answer, and this is something that was put out, I believe. Uh, by them with references from our, uh, comprehensive plan, our housing study plan, and based on previous history. Of developments going into this project potentially. Uh, the response was, as mentioned previously, the public infrastructure costs increase the cost of the lot. So that's the property that is in, with which that we're giving them, um, or they're purchasing with the property. Um, so we would also, if we're splitting this, we would have to get them more property or they'd have to purchase more property. Which is very expensive in this area. Um, so as mentioned previously, the public infrastructure costs increase the cost of the lot. To the extent that the lot becomes cost prohibitive for potential buyers. So anything that these folks put out gets passed down to potential buyers or renters. Because just like any other building in any community, um, these buildings aren't free. Um, they cost money and the renters or owners will end up paying for them. So I'll continue the sentence. The city has analyzed this option in the past. And determine single-family playoffs are not financially feasible at the site. And I'll expound on that a little bit from my history of this land is you get developments, say like Gerard, that's been proposed. They come in with twenty-two units, townhomes. Are they going to be able to pay for the infrastructure, all the property, um, all of the improvements that are necessary of this? Project and then still be able to go home and, uh, take a profit home to their family? I mean, that's a very tough, uh, tough decision and tough to analyze. And then we throw them hypotheticals of. Let's split this project and go, um, ten thousand feet away or ten thousand yards away and say. Here, let's do two projects. I think that's very difficult for somebody on the fly to say, yep, that's feasible when. I mean, we've seen how much work has gone into this project alone or this property. So I think it's. In their defense, I think that's a a pretty tough question to put on the table and say, yes, we would do that or no, we couldn't do that. Without more research and of that property. Um, how are we going to get them the infrastructure that far out when we don't have infrastructure there? Um, how are we going to get them utilities and not charge them directly for that? Making it instead of the cost rents that they're going to be charging, charging an extra four hundred to six hundred dollars. I think that would, uh, definitely kind of bury, um, our residents under more, uh, debt load. So.
Mr. Mayor, a quick comment. If I could. Um, I looked up that.
Um, I looked up that project while we were sitting here talking, um, it was $621,000 for the twin home structure. That's no land, that's no landscaping. Okay. He already owned the lot, so he didn't have to buy the lot. I don't know what a twin home lot is worth in River Falls, but again, you're getting into structures that are hundreds of thousands of dollars each. And again, it just can't happen.
Okay. Does anybody, yes, go ahead.
To piggyback off of what Todd said, I lived, uh, just on the other side of the fence from South, quick trip, uh, directly across the street from where the old motel was, where the affordable housing is currently going in. Uh, my cousin-in-law actually bought that property, um, for like $205,000. It is two 1974, um, twin homes, um, next to each other and them, that's old. They had to do a ton of work to get them up to rentals and to live in. Um, and I lived in one of those sites for a long time and thought about buying that. So for an older building at $205,000, I couldn't imagine what it would be to build a brand new one today like Todd's mentioning and then have to charge rents for that.
Okay. Uh, council members that haven't spoken yet on this. Anybody? Okay. So we have a, Christie, we have, we have a first and a second on the resolution approving the planned unit development for the specific implementation plan for Milltown residents.
Yes, a vote on this resolution would approve the specific implementation plan for the residents. Mr. Morissette.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Plunkett.
Yes.
Mr. Gagne.
Yes.
Mr. Gagne.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Odine.
Yes.
Mr. Beerstead.
Yes.
Mr. Downing.
No.
Six to one in favor with Downing. Again.
Okay. Let's move on. Next is resolution approving a development agreement between the city River Falls and one RF LLC. And I will take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the development agreement with one, with RF one LLC.
Second.
Okay, we have first and the second. Does any members have any comments?
Um.
Oh, uh, go ahead, Diane. Ms. Odine, you had your hand up?
I did. Thank you. Um, and I just wanted to, um, to say a little bit in favor of renters. I rent, I had to rent a house when I first moved to town. A, a lot of people want to live in River Falls. And we say at our boundaries that we are inclusive, we're trying to make an inclusive, uh, community. And I think renters are a big part of that. Um, and I think that we need to have housing for everyone, not just the people who can afford or want single family homes. And I think that housing needs to be distributed throughout the whole entire town. We're always going to have a lot of rental units. We're a college town, but it's not just college students who rent. Um, there are people who move here to work at the university, who move here to work in the industrial parks. They need a place to live too. So, um, uh, I'm in favor of this development agreement. I think it's a good agreement. This is going to be a quality development. This is going to be the kind of upscale, um, apartments that we see in Hudson and, um, in the Twin Cities suburbs, um, that's, uh, going to be very desirable. Um, I think that renters also deserve to live in nice places and I think this will be a very nice place to live. So, thank you.
You were next.
Me? Did you say me, Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Downing, you wanted to go, right?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
As a renter, I appreciate what the, what the other council member said and, um, you know, the Gerard concept plan was not some old plan. Uh, it's something that's new. Uh, newer, newish in the sense of 2018. And I don't see why we can't do both these plans, but, um, I also appreciate the value this project brings to the table. I just don't feel it represents the city the best, in my opinion. And I appreciate the rest of the council. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Downing. Who's next?
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Gagne.
I agree. I totally agree with, uh, Sean on the Gerard property not being an old, uh, style project. And I hope that, um, I, I feel like that was kind of directed towards my comment of a 1974 duplex. Um, and that's not exactly my, my correlation. My correlation there was that rents of something that's even older than a brand new building would be jacked up even higher or the cost to build it would be passed down to the people looking to purchase those. And it's a lot less funding available for projects that we have to do or infrastructure, uh, or any of them types of things. Um, I also have a question for the developer. Uh, three sixty, if they're available.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, even during COVID and pre-COVID, have you had any, um, issues filling any of your properties or any properties that you're aware of? I know that was one of the comments from one of the, um, concerned citizens. As far as maybe we're building too much, but I know I've personally seen them get filled up pretty good for a nice housing for families. What is your experience been, um, being in this business as far as being able to fill these versus vacancies?
Yeah, so we, you hear me okay? So we of course watch vacancies and delinquencies on our current assets very closely. Um, vacancies have remained stable. Delinquencies have only slightly increased, uh, in our current assets. So it's been very minimal. Regarding new construction, we actually had a project under construction when, uh, COVID hit. So, you know, we were projected for that project September first to be at 60% occupied. That was pre-COVID. COVID hit and with candor, you know, it kind of shook us a little bit. We're like, okay, this is under construction. We have to try to lease up during this time. How is this going to work? And we ended up doing virtual tours, kind of modified our marketing plan and our, uh, typical operating protocols. As of August first, that property was 67% leased. So we were outperforming our performant already on August first or September first. So September first, we'll get here, we'll be over 70%, which is about 10% ahead of projections. Um, so we're still seeing good solid demand for good solid product.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you're muted.
Uh, who, who hasn't had a chance to talk yet on the developer's agreement?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, Mr. Plunkett.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, is this the one I'm, I'm trying to make sense of which one I'm looking at here to make sure I'm in the proper one here? Is this the one where section 4.3 mentions the tax increment financing? Is that the, am I looking at the, the proper one here on the agenda and not the, uh?
Yeah, Mr. Plunkett, we're, we're on page, uh, one. The resolution for this item is, um, found on page, let's see, 176. The development agreement, um, is later in the, I believe later in, let's see, um.
Oh, got it.
Later in the packet.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I said that backwards. We've got the resolutions at the very end in the 170s. And then, uh, the item itself, the, um, proposed developer's agreement is, um, I can find it here.
That the page 35?
That sounds like a lot closer. Let me look here and see if I can tell you.
Thirty-three. I believe it's 33, yes.
Starts on page 33.
Yeah, and I've got a question for Mr. Simpson then. Uh, on page, uh, 37 and 38, that's section, uh, 4.2 and 4.3 of the agreement. Um, can you explain that a little bit more to me? What's, what's going on there with that transfer of funds?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll do my best. Um, I should say that most of these items are independent of one another. For example, I told you the, the future land use plan you could pass, but then not pass other things. The developer's agreement is an item on, that's where you're first making commitments or suggesting you're making commitments to do things and including in section four, one and, or I'm sorry, four, two and four, three. So four, two is a lump sum amount for the actual cost of some public infrastructure that is intersection. Um, and, um, contribution towards intersection, water and sewer, um, parking and the connection to Glover. And what this developer's agreement does is that essentially that's a lump sum payment going to the developer. The city has then paid that back through tax incremental financing. So when you get to four, three, um, we're, we're taking a credit for the sale of the price of the lot, which means we're actually only paying 600 towards those public infrastructures. Then we are, um, committing to a maximum amount of 1.9 million of financing towards the project. And the tax incremental financing district, which we'll talk about, or I can, I guess I can talk about it in a segue. The increment district or the taxes, the new taxes from the project are going to exceed, um, both the 1.9 million paid to the developer, paid back to the developer after he pays us and the 800,000 towards the infrastructure. So essentially the project is paying, um, paying for those infrastructure amounts and for the development incentive, um, for doing the project. And then there's a balance of increment that the city would be able to use for other projects.
Um, so that was about 10 years on each, 10 years that it would take to pay back and 10 years on the balance that we get?
Yeah, I'm going to look for the, the memo because I don't want to misquote, um, the numbers that staff did such a good job of putting together.
Um, yeah, I may have lost. I saw that some in here and I lost it.
And that of course is based on the policy that the council has passed, um, more recently of, on tax incremental financing. So, um, there's a, on page 13, uh, of your packet. It kind of discusses how they're providing a guaranteed, uh, minimum assessment, meaning they won't, they won't challenge any assessment. Um, under 10.8 million dollars. And then that's going to generate tax increment each year. Um, and I believe that was about 10. Let me look here to see the, uh.
The, the 231 guaranteed minimum or?
Yeah, so we're, we're expecting that that's 231 minimum payment, 231,000 to be clear. Um, they have to pay that for 10, 10 years for sure, that minimum amount. But the life of the TID is actually 20 years, so they would, um, be paying beyond that, but there wouldn't be the minimum payment. Um, in practical sense, the property is not likely to, um, to be worth less at the end of the 10 years. So, you know, we do, we do have that 10 year. We've used it a couple of times. Um, it, it's just kind of a, a safety for the city. But the project is anticipated to generate almost $5 million of increment. And so then the city is putting, you know, approximately 2.7 in the development agreement. That other 2 million then is available and then identified for projects such as resurfacing all the trails in the park. Um, and doing other projects, potentially it could be used for land acquisition or other things necessary to, um, kind of work on some of these other concepts without, you know, committing anything the council hasn't already committed. So that's how that financing works. The, the theory is but for the development, you wouldn't have the 4.8 million dollars in increment. Um, and some of the other points I heard this evening, you, you may have less. I mean, or the same with other projects that, but, but for a project, you're not going to have the, the increment. And then we're, we're investing the increment into the project and the park.
So almost a million an acre that the city is seeing in a return on this over 20 years.
Correct, which is, which is pretty good compared to even some of the corporate park projects that we've done.
Um, and that would expect to, clarify for me, maybe this is a mayor question. If we approve four here, essentially that means that there were then tied into approving six on our, uh, here.
Yeah, from a legal standpoint, you're not, and Chris Garrett could, could correct me because of course the, the development agreement says it's all subject to the approval of the council, the appropriate approval of the councils. So, and then I, it wouldn't make a lot of sense if you weren't in favor of the, if you weren't not in favor of the tax incremental financing. This would be an okay time for you to raise it and try to amend the developer's agreement to remove the, the tax incremental financing from the developer's agreement. But you certainly aren't, I don't believe you're legally tied. You can decide between this vote and item number six that you've changed your mind, um, and signal, and signal as so to, to staff.
Um, and then how does that affect our, it's essentially revenue caps that we have as far as our tax base. Um, so with the, are we, I, I'm just not clear on that process at a city level here.
Yeah, there's some formulas related to property tax caps. Um, we have not met our property tax cap since I've been here. So we, we have a tax to the max, so to speak. Um, from a practical standpoint, the property tax caps, our council has been more conserve, quite a bit more conservative than what would be allowed, um, under the property tax caps. But there is some impact to this based on net new construction. Um, but there's a formula and they call it tid in, tid out. And so there's, it's, there is some impact on this, but essentially this project is, is expected to pay its own way. Um, and then some, that's the benefit of doing this project. And then as we've seen with other, um, tax amount districts more recently in four and five, as you start to retire the districts, then of course they're fully on the tax roll. There's no increment collected by the city anymore. Then the taxes go to everybody, um, school district, um, county, technical college and city.
And so in the original TID, all of that tax is coming to the city after it's split up into the other districts?
Correct.
Okay, interesting. Um, so essentially this is a way to retain the value and to keep taxes low in many ways for other residents of the city as we're looking at developments like this.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's one of the benefits of the TID is that you're, you're making a commitment with the project plan that you're going to stay within the means that the TID is providing. Um, and then to the, for the most part, we've done pay as you go TIDS, which means the developer is actually making that tax payment first to the city. And then anything they get back is from proceeds they've already paid in. So, um.
So we're not necessarily doing a bond sale or something to provide that?
No, the exception in this development would be that $600,000 net, um, for the, um, infrastructure. And we've done, we could have done pay as you go and have it wrapped into the development, but we thought the interest costs and things weren't, weren't in the city's best interest. It'd be better just to, you know, kind of do the cost of money today for that. So that, I mean, there is, there is risk to the city of doing the development agreement, the TID, and then the project gets rolling and we make our contribution and then they stop on the project. Um, it's not a true pay as you go in the sense that there's absolutely no risk to the city. Um, although there's, I don't think there's such a project that's absolutely no risk, but, um, it's basically that $600,000 capital and that's why we're asking them to, to back that with a performance bond or, or other bonds so that we minimize our risk.
Okay. Thank you very much for the clarification and the additional information.
Mr. Mayor. Okay. Has it, has anybody, has everybody else asked, does anybody who hasn't talked yet have any questions? Okay. Yeah, Mr. Downing.
Mr. Mayor, I always appreciate how fair you are to members of the council and letting them speak. Uh, it's a difficult job as a chair. Uh, however, the lack of committee engagement in this particular process has left a sour taste in my mouth. I would like to work with you and the council in the future to improve our community engagement. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to talk about that? Okay, anybody else have anything to talk about that involves the purchase or the developer's agreement? Okay, Christie, we have a first and a second on the resolution approving a development agreement between the City River Falls and the One RF LLC.
A vote in favor would be to approve the development agreement. Start with Mr. Watson.
Aye.
Plunkett.
Aye.
Mr. Beerstead.
Aye.
Mr. Morissette.
Aye.
Mr. Gagne.
Aye.
Mr. Downing.
No.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
No.
Thank you. Ms. Odean.
Aye.
Thank you. Six to one in favor with Downing voting again.
Okay, next move on to a resolution approving a purchase agreement between the City River Falls and One RF LLC. And I'll take a motion on this.
Mayor, make a motion. We approve the purchase agreement between the City River Falls and One RF LLC.
Okay. First, we have first and a second. Who'd like to start with comments? No comments? Okay, Christie, we have first and a second on the resolution approving a purchase agreement between the City River Falls and One RF LLC.
A vote in favor would be to approve the purchase agreement. Start with Mr. Beerstead.
Yes.
Mr. Downing.
No.
Mr. Plunkett.
Yes.
Ms. Odean.
Yes.
Mr. Gagne.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Morissette.
Yes.
Was that a yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Six to one, all in favor except for Mr. Downing.
Okay, next move on to resolution creating tax increment district number sixteen, approving the project plan and establishing its boundaries. I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of tax increment district sixteen.
Second.
Okay, got a first and a second. Comments from the council members who'd like to go first? Yep, Ms. Odean.
I would just say that to all the people who commented, we hear you. But we also have a bigger picture in mind. This project, this tax increment district serves two. Functions that the city needs. One is improving, improving DeSantis Park so that more people can. Be, so it's accessible to more people. So it's got a parking lot, it's got restroom facilities, it's accessible to more people in the community. And the second is to. Encourage more housing, which we need in the city for our workforce. So thanks, that's all I have to say about it.
Okay, who's next?
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, go ahead.
I'll just speak to tax increment financing in general, and it does obviously impact this. Item on the agenda. I've historically been in favor of tax increment financing. I think it's a a great use to pay for other projects, infrastructure. That otherwise would be difficult for the city to pay for. Or our developers or our residents to pay for, so we're not passing the buck down on them. And I think there's definitely a method and a board of public entities, including Chippewa Valley Technical College, the universities. Our school district, the city, and some other players that meet to say yea or nay on these types of items. And, you know, I think it's definitely a benefit to our community to use tack and increment financing in this specific. Instance, as well as in our previous items that we've used it for. I'm definitely in favor of this, as I mentioned, and my vote there, and I'll be voting yes.
Okay. Yep, Mr. Plunkett. I think you're muted, Ben.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Does the city, in the twenty years that I've lived here, I've never had an assessment on my property. Does the city do assessments on properties for improvements that I just haven't noticed in my area? Or is that something that we avoid by using these tools like? Tax increment financing so that we actually have the money to pay for those?
Yep.
Yeah, there. Mr. Plunkett, there, we have to do a revaluation or reassessment citywide every so many years based on. How the. Fair market value is tracking versus our assessed values. And so we've reached that point here shortly, and I believe our contract with. The assessment firm, they do what's called maintenance assessing each year. So if you do, if you hold a building permit, build an addition, build a new house. They're doing those each year. But existing homes are not being revalued each year. They're done on a mass, mass revaluation year, and I believe our next year is the twenty twenty-one. Revaluation year. So that'll be. I'm not sure, I'd have to look at the details because I'm not sure if they're setting the value for January one of twenty-two or January one of twenty-one in that reval year. And then, and then it's adjusted. On these properties, we would be, it would be part of the assessment, so they'd get a partial valuation on January first, whatever's done by then. And then they'd get a full value the first full year that all construction and occupancy and everything is complete, and that's done by our assessment firm under contract. Because the only thing that's not done by our assessment firm is manufacturing.
I may have not been clear there. I guess I was referring to if the city put streetlights in front of my house or redid a sidewalk.
Special assessment.
Especially.
River Falls is is. Of all the communities I've lived in, it's used as special assessments the least. It pays for almost everything that would be assessed to an individual property owner. It pays out of the taxes. As a pub, you know, the policy frankly has been that it's a public good for everybody in town. And so with some limited exceptions, there really isn't much special assessments to any. Property owners when we do street reconstructions or sidewalk, residential sidewalk. There are some assessments for commercial properties. Like intersection signalization or commercial sidewalk is sometimes assessed, but. We use very little special assessment in River Falls.
Thank you very much.
Dan, I believe you had your hand up. Ms. Odean?
I just, I I I just wanted to clarify that I believe what Mr. Plunkett was talking about was a special assessment and. In my years in the council, the only time I can recall a special assessment was for a sewer improvement project, but. For roads and sidewalks and the the usual improvements, we built that into our budget.
Okay, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, Mr. Watson.
I just, I would like to direct everyone's attention to page eighty-five of the packet. There's a map on page eighty-five which shows. The the area of the TID, the tax increment district. And then the half mile buffer, which is a kind of a dark blue line. That is the area within which. By law, we are allowed to fund projects using this TID. And of course, one of the projects listed, I don't think we're limited to projects being listed in the in the resolution necessarily, but. It's always good to have those out in front of the public is the DeSantis Park. And the area east of the kind of Man Valley Corporate Park, including that. Including the mound and and the area, you know, south and to the west of Powell Avenue. There is an opportunity here to quadruple the size of DeSantis Park. And it's, this is an amazing opportunity that we're that we're sitting in front of right now. To do something for future generations in River Falls and and really, you know, DeSantis Park could become the hub. Of an amazing trail system, bike paths, you know, you name it up on that mound. And then back down through the corporate park. And I just, I I'm very excited about the possibilities that this TID represents. So, thank you.
Yep. Anybody else on the the incremental incremental district number sixteen?
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment.
Yep, Mr. Downing.
I'd like to thank Mr. Watson and his his comment he just made. I think he he has a really good vision as far as. What we should make this at the end of the night. My concern is the process and how I feel that we didn't listen to the city as a whole regarding a future regional park. And how we get to that. But I do appreciate what other council members have said tonight as far as like the end goals and the amenities we get. I just have a different view of how we get there. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any else? Okay, Christie, we have a first and a second on a resolution approving a, I'm sorry, a resolution creating a tax incremental district number sixteen. This would approve its project plan and establish its boundaries.
A vote in favor would pass the resolution creating the district sixteen. Start with Mr. Plunkett.
Aye.
Ms. Odean.
Aye.
Mr. Watson.
Aye.
Mr. Gagne.
Aye.
Mr. Morissette.
Aye.
Mr. Downing.
Respectfully, no.
Mr. Beerstead.
Aye.
Thank you. Six to one, all in favor except for Mr. Downing.
Okay, next is resolution applying for exemption from the county library tax, and I'll take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we apply for an exemption to the county library tax.
Second.
Okay, first and second, any comments, have any, or any council members have any comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, Mr. Gagne.
Yeah, so question for staff, maybe Scott can answer this. Is this an item that we do every year, just so the public has knowledge of that? And why is this important?
We do it every year since the county told us they, their corporation council believed that it was necessary to do so, and I think if it reminds, I don't think we have that in the memo, but. I I this is probably the third or fourth go around, so. The reason this is important is under state law, everyone is entitled to access to a library. That's somewhat unique to Wisconsin. And because they, in the constitution and statutes provided access to everyone to the library, they suggested that those who were providing library services should get reimbursed by those who do not. Have library services. And so this is the mechanism in Wisconsin for us to basically tell the county that we have a library that meets the minimum requirements for library services. And that we're providing library services. To all of our residents, and therefore the county does not need to levy separately a levy on our residents for library services because we already provide that. And so this. This essentially is exempting city residents from the otherwise the the tax that the county would place on. For example, the town of River Falls that doesn't have a library. And then that levy is divvied up amongst the the communities that do have a library. So without this, we would lose a significant portion of. Of our library funding each year.
So I would just follow up. It makes sense for us to vote in favor of this. Obviously, we provide services to way more than just the city residents. I think I've heard from many folks around. Even the rural areas that really love and enjoy our library and praise the work that they do and the work that the councils allowed them to do. So kudos to our library staff as well.
Anybody else have any comments on this? Okay, Christie, we have a first and a second on a resolution applying for exemption from the county library tax.
A vote in favor for the resolution would apply for the exemption. Start with Ms. Odean.
Aye.
Mr. Downing.
Aye.
Mr. Morissette. Mr. Gagne.
Aye.
Mr. Watson.
Aye.
Mr. Beerstead.
Aye.
Mr. Plunkett.
Aye.
Thank you. All in favor.
Thanks, Christie. Okay, next we'll go on to a review of resolution number sixty-five zero one. As per request of the council, the council wanted to review this information on this resolution at the upcoming meetings. And information has been provided in the packet regarding COVID nineteen in our area. And if we have questions, it can be directed to Mr. Mr. Stroud. Are you there, Jason?
I am. I didn't, I did not have a report or a statement prepared. I would take any questions there may be.
Does the council members have any questions for Mr. Stroud? Yep, Ms. Odean.
Yes, thank you, Jason. Could could you give us just a ten thousand foot overview of. How the pandemic is playing out in Pierce and St. Croix County in the last couple of weeks?
Certainly I'll try. As as I think I've mentioned to the council before, we we attempt to meet with our public health officials every Thursday at eleven AM. And if I hopefully don't capture our conversation last Thursday correctly. That there was, the COVID activity level would still be reported as high as of last Thursday when we met with them. However, I think what I sensed is. I guess, I guess maybe a glimmer of hope would would, I don't know, maybe that's the the best wording I can come up with. There's some preliminary conversations about what would the appropriate timeline be to look at perhaps expanding upon gathering limits, et cetera. And there's some trending that they would like to continue to see for a couple more weeks. And that that's a, that's a big ask and a big hope, but I think we we had a positive conversation about it. So I have not looked at the numbers yet this week. I can tell you that my experience in working through this is no news is good news and and. Other than a quick kind of collegial, just a quick phone call to our health official, I haven't been contacted with anything, so that's a good week.
Okay, one one follow up question. Have, has there been a discussion about increased risks as the students return to the university?
I I think we're all on high alert and and discussions, you know, we we are in tune with what the school's plans are and. And I think just learned today, or speaking for myself, I guess, that I just learned today, the schools do intend to proceed with fall sports as much as they're able. So so we are kind of evaluating what that may mean, and I think there is some. Some, we're some little bit of trepidation, a little bit of concern as as we head into schools opening that we're all just kind of holding our breath.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Yep, Mr. Plunkett.
I I believe share a little bit of that trepidation and breath holding. As we look at the old collegiate tribe that is going to be coming up here. As well as our River Falls School District and Stroud. What I've seen from. Information from other regions of the country that have. Started that experiment before we have. Has not left me with a feeling of confidence in any declining numbers. I think that the risk to the community. Is rather large at. This time juncture. And that it is time to start considering. At what point we look at using metrics for implementing. Future restrictions to. Stop increased pandemic spread should such occur. I certainly hope that my trepidation is unfounded. But governance based on hope. Will leave us in a position. will leave us in a position that would be, I believe the phrase is, behind the eight ball. In addition, we are seeing a lawsuit brought to repeal the governor's mask order. And should that lawsuit be successful, the city would need to already have a process in place to implement such a mask order as it has been apparent that, that has been effective in the areas that have implemented and followed it. I'm interested in hearing what the other council members think about what metrics should exist for infections, morbidity, and mortality to serve as a point for starting that process. Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else have any questions for Jason? No? Okay, thank you, Jason. Next move on to administrator's report. If anybody's have any questions for Scott? Scott, if you have anything new for us?
No, I appreciate we put the mayor's video on occasion this week too. And that was, that was because I wasn't able to get it done, so the, the mayor.
Sorry.
The mayor, the mayor had a, a backup, but the backup didn't come through for the video. So we did issue the, the numbers today for that. The updated weekly numbers and the mayor's video, the popular mayor's video will be back. Ever rested and ready to go next, next, uh, next Tuesday. Appreciate the council's difficult decision this evening. And I took, took quite a few notes regarding concerns about the process and public input and communication strategy. So we'll, I'll be looking forward to having those conversations with council members, also members of the plant commission, park board, and others. How we can improve process.
Hey, Scott?
Yes?
So I see that Public Works is doing some tree planting. Are we doing annual tree sale again this year for the general public? And when is that usually the popular timeframe for that?
I'll have to get back to you, Mr. Gagne, but I believe all of the trees that we put in are going to be used for boulevard trees. And Jason's maybe shaking his head to say that I'm correct. So we've got with our ashbor plan, where we took out quite a few trees. And so we've got, we've got a number to replace. And I believe we're planning to use the bare root stock for that this year. So I don't believe we'll have many for public sale this year.
Thanks.
Yep, Ms. Odean?
Yes, from your report, we are losing our city forester, is that correct? Do we have plans to divvy up his responsibilities or somehow manage, you know, the replacement of all the ash trees in town?
Yeah, there's, there's several internally complete, competing plans right now for that. So the department heads are, are a flurry, but absolutely, it's a, the, the forester role is an important role for us. It's actually statutory and ordinance role for us, so we, we expect to do that.
I'm, I'm sorry to le, to lose him.
We are too, and I guess he's, he's taking his talents north. Although I'm, actually, I'm not sure if he's north, if he's in the northern part, if he's in Canada northern than us, or if he's just east in Canada. But so, yeah, we're, Nate did a good job for us.
How about the really important question about the splash pad and what was wrong and it hasn't been fixed?
I'll defer to Mr. Stroud if he knows, but I don't have a specific update on that.
It's going on my list of things you learn when you're assistant city administrator and answer to things that were posted on social media. So, so I'm gonna be honest with you, I don't have an answer. I got obligated elsewhere today, but I can get one for you.
That's okay. I, I think, I, I did we, were we, I think we, I saw we were able to get out on our city website that the, that it was back open and things are going fine. But those are, you know, those are the things, we can raise taxes, we can do things, but you screw up the splash pad and your phone rings off the hook.
Yeah.
I did, I did learn that we did buy or get as part of our purpose some spare parts for, for the splash pad because it's expected that an item that gets used as much as this is going to have regular maintenance and replacement of items.
Very good.
Okay, anybody else got anything for Scott? Okay, let's move on to the comptroller's report. Ms. Odean?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor. This is the comptroller's report for July 2020. General fund revenues through the end of July were $5,420,981 or 49% of budgeted revenues. Revenues in the month of July included $299,992 in shared revenue for Wisconsin State Aid and $175,679 in transportation aids. Expenditures for the same period were $5,413,750 or 49% of budgeted expenses. So net revenues over expenditures for the period ending July 31st, 2020 was $7,231.
Well, thank you, Ms. Odean. Okay?
And I will make one quick comment before I move to adjourn. I'm really proud of all of you guys. We had a tough night tonight and everybody handled themselves very well. Thank you. Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, first and second to adjourn. Any, any comments about it? Christie, we have first and second to adjourn.
Gagne.
Yes.
Mr. Plunkett.
Yes.
Mr. Beerst.
Yes.
Mr. Morissette.
Yes.
Mr. Downing.
Aye.
Ms. Odean.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everybody. We are adjourned. Thanks for all the input tonight, guys. Thanks for everybody that showed up for the meeting. Thanks for all the extra help we have. Greatly appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Everybody be safe.
Thanks for all those folks in IT for working.